Okay, the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. The open session part of the meeting will begin at around 7:00 PM. B, public comment on closed session items. Before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment, excuse me, on closed session agenda items?
There is no public comment on closed session items.
Thank you. Seeing that there are none, the board will now adjourn into closed session. See you at 7:00. Okay. Good evening. My name's Cindy Water, and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is hosting a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Luis Huertas and Francisco Mesa. One of the interpreters will now translate the directions on our English channel so our Spanish-speaking families may hear the instructions.
Buenas noches. This is a reunion of the Mesa Directiva of the district's school hall, Unificado, of the Valley of Napa. If you want to attend this reunion in Spanish, what you have to do is, in the bottom of your screen, click the icon of the flagpole, and it will lead you to the option of Spanish. If you click on it immediately, you will enjoy this conference in Spanish. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can we please start with an attendance roll call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant?
Student Board Member McGrath?
Present.
Trustee Water?
Present.
Trustee Reiser?
Present.
Trustee Chu?
Present.
Trustee Gracia?
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Present.
Trustee Hart?
Present.
Trustee Gonzalez Mares?
Present.
Coram, present. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us tonight for our NVUSD Board meeting. E1, Report on Closed Session. Trustee Chu, do you have a report on closed session agenda items?
E1, Report on Closed Session Items. With respect to item D1, student under student discipline, with respect to every item of business to be discussed in closed session pursuant to ED code 35146 and 4891220, Government Code Section 49060 and 49078, and the Family Rights and Privacy Act, USC Section 1232G, Student Matters. A, Expulsions. The board recommends the expulsion for student 0282024A.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve from Trustee Gracia and a second from Trustee Hart, and we need a roll call vote.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez Mares?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
And number two, the board recommends the expulsion for student 02082024B.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion from Trustee Gracia, a second from Trustee Hart, and we need a roll call vote.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez Mares?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. E2, Flag Salute. I'd like Director Manning to lead us in the flag salute.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
E3, Announcement. This meeting is live streamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district's YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced on the district's webpage at nvusd.org. The process for public comment can also be found on the district's webpage. Okay. E4, I need an approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Hart. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And E5, Approval of Minutes for January 18, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Hart. All in favor?
Aye.
And student trustee? Does he vote on that? Oh, okay. Okay. E6, Recognition of Visitors and Employee Organizations. And Dr. Macedi, do we have any visitors in attendance or representatives of our employee organizations?
Great. Thank you, President Water. I do not see any of our representatives from our employee organizations present this evening.
F, Recognition of Students of the Month. Again, my favorite part of the agenda. Number one, Napa Valley Adult Education. Will Assistant Principal Peterson please present the Students of the Month? This will be by Zoom.
Good evening. Can you hear me? I hope so.
We can hear you, yes. And it's Principal Peterson.
It's Principal Peterson.
Principal, yes. My name's Colleen Peterson. I am the principal at Napa Valley Adult Ed. Tonight, we are recognizing two amazing adult students. First is our November Student of the Month, Mara Bell Aguirre, who is a student in our Ask 12 program, which is Adults Supporting K-12 Student Success. This program works in partnerships with five family resource centers throughout the county to help parents develop technology skills to support their K-12 children. She is attending the Ask 12 technology class at Irene Snow Elementary School, and she is learning different school-related digital platforms. Mara Bell is very hardworking and shows excellent effort and care with daily classroom learning. She shows a conscientious effort to learn, and she was always encouraging her classmates to stay positive. Mara Bell has done a great job of facing and overcoming big challenges in learning technology. This year, one of her goals was to feel comfortable with the digital skills that she's learning so that she can be more involved in her daughter's school and to be able to support her daughter with homework. She is also finding out that part of school success for her daughter is getting involved in school activities and meetings. Learning how to navigate the school's website and Parents wear helps her to get more involved and not to miss any important meetings such as school conferences, ELAC meetings, school assemblies, and the book fair. Congratulations to Mara Bell, and I think she has a few words for us.
Is Mara Bell going to speak?
Hi.
Go ahead.
Hi. My name is Maribela Hirve. Thank you for this recognition. Thank you to my technology teacher, Saad Parkas, for helping me to improve my skills in technology. Thank you, Adult School, for giving me the opportunity to learn. Now I can support my daughters with homework and navigate the school website. I like to help other mothers by teaching them what I am learning. I want to be an example and inspiration for them because it is never too late to learn. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next is our December Student of the Month, Eduardo Martinez, who completed his high school diploma on November 17. He is the first in his family to graduate. Eduardo showed great determination and grit by finishing 69 high school credits at NVIE in four months. During this time, he also started a new full-time job. Eduardo completed his diploma as a surprise to his father, and he was an inspiring student speaker at our December graduation ceremony, and I believe Eduardo is going to share that speech with us tonight. So congratulations, Eduardo.
I don't see Eduardo on. Eduardo, if you're on, can you raise your hand, please?
Darn. It was such a great speech, too. I believe several of our board members were there, as well as Dr. Macedi, so.
Yes, we were. He did such an amazing job, and so we did hear it. And if he would like to send it to the board via email, that's another option so we can review it written format.
Okay. I apologize. I know that our coordinator, Kristen, was to be here with him tonight, and she is feeling sick, so I wish she could have been here, but that's it for our Students of the Month. Thank you so much.
No problem. Great job.
Thank you, and congratulations to Mara Bell and Eduardo. And next, we have New Technology High School. With, will Principal Dev please present the Students of the Month?
So, I am here. Good evening, NVUSD Board President Water.
Okay, Assistant Principal Biggs.
Yeah, Assistant Principal Biggs. Sorry about that, Assistant Principal Biggs. Welcome.
Not at all. Not at all. The two of us kind of tag-team a lot of stuff, so it makes sense. Good evening, NVUSD Board President Water, Board of Trustees, Dr. Macedi, and community members, and congratulations to the Student of the Month winners from NVEA. My name is NVAE, sorry, eesh. My name is Andrew Biggs, and I am the Assistant Principal at New Technology High School. I am delighted to introduce the New Tech High Students of the Month for January and February. The first New Tech Penguin that I would like to introduce is 12th grade student Lee Ellison, our Student of the Month for January. Lee is well-known on our campus as a strong and outspoken defender of our school culture with a particular focus on inclusivity. If anything is ever said or done on our campus that damages our tight-knit culture, Lee always engages directly and appropriately to address the harm. Since joining NTHS as a freshman and then again as a sophomore, Lee has grown in major ways. They have blossomed into the kind friend with a great sense of humor, and their academic performance has steadily improved up to the 4.0 GPA that they have demonstrated throughout this year. Plus, Lee is one of the most reliable, effective office assistants that we have ever had. Congratulations to Lee. We are so lucky that you are a New Tech Penguin. And Lee has prepared a statement to share with the board as well.
Hi. Firstly, I'd like to say thank you to everyone. New Technology is 100% the school for me, and I know this because I went to two different high schools, and New Technology was the first one I ran back to. At New Technology, I've never felt like I had, I mean, at New Technology, I felt like I never had before. I failed five systems before, and I was afraid it would be the same, but it wasn't. It was better than I ever imagined. I had people who listened to me and finally understood when I needed in order to be successful at school, and I'm really grateful that New Tech was that school for me.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lee, and again, congratulations. And next, it is my pleasure to introduce 12th grade student Michael Richards as the New Tech High Student of the Month for February. Michael truly embodies our school's cultural mantra of trust, respect, and responsibility. Michael has maintained a 4.0 GPA throughout his academic career, which as a dual-enrolled college student is certainly worthy of distinction. Additionally, Michael is a skilled and professionally recognized artist. You may have seen his work featured publicly along with other distinguished artists in the Napa Lighted Art Festival that is currently still on display. In fact, his commitment and skill to digital arts earned him a distinction as a Career Tech Ed Student of the Year, the presentation at which he was a keynote speaker. Michael has much to be proud of, so congratulations to him. And Michael has prepared a statement to share with the board as well.
Hi, everyone. First, I would like to thank the board for this tremendous honor bestowed upon me. Since this is my final semester at New Tech, I've had a lot of time to reflect on my time here, and I just want to take this opportunity to share some of the key skills and values I feel I've learned. I feel that one of the key things that New Tech can take pride in is teaching real-world skills. I think that they do a wonderful job in integrating real-world problems and topics into our everyday classroom. I feel that integrating project-based learning and collaboration can truly help the students comprehend and understand the topics. I feel that it provides students with critical skills that increase oral communication, leadership skills, and problem-solving. And lastly, I feel that New Tech does a great job with providing their students with a multitude of resources. So, like, mental health tutoring and assistance with really anything I needed to make sure that I was successful. Personally, I believe that these skills set a great foundation for college, but also a strong foundation for the rest of my life. Next year, I'll be attending Napa Valley Junior College to help me specify what major I want to pursue so that I can pick the best for your college for me. So, thank you so much again. This is a huge honor.
You're welcome. And congratulations to Penguins Lee and Michael. All right. Now, we have public comment, G, public comment on non-agenda items. Trustee Chu, did we receive any public comment on non-agenda items via email?
No public comments on non-agenda items were submitted via email before 8:00 AM this morning.
All right. But we do have two cards for, two speakers for public comments tonight. Ari, is it Ariana Irvin? If you can come on up.
Hold on, if you, I'll have a switch there. Yeah.
Is that, okay.
You got it.
Okay. Awesome. Okay. Hello, my name is Ariana, and I'm a Napa resident, a small business owner, and the mother of a rising kindergartner. I wanted to speak today because I have been alarmed at the use of iPads and general technology usage starting in the TK and kindergarten classrooms. And as a taxpayer of this community and the parent of a young child, I feel the need to speak up. My opinion is, of course, my own, but I can tell you that I've had countless conversations with parents of kids currently in TK or kinder, as well as parents with children set to enter TK and kinder, and the sentiment is the same. There is no place for iPads in the classrooms of four- and five-year-olds. We have already experienced a profound societal shift from chalkboards and whiteboards to Promethean boards and television screens in schools, and most of us, including children, spend countless waking hours on devices, and computers have become ubiquitous in every middle school and high school classroom. I'm not railing against technology even in schools. I am just saying unequivocally there is no need to put four- and five-year-olds on iPads in public classrooms. The research is clear and abundant. Social media has spiked suicide rates in adolescents. Screens are addictive. Most children spend more time on screens than they do outside, socializing with each other, or even with their own parents. Why are we starting this destructive pattern so young? Children have their entire lives, including all of their adult lives, to function in the digital world. There is absolutely no educational need to introduce children as young as four and five to iPads, even if the introduction is under the guise of educational games. Hammer, pencil, and paper instead. Use the money you are pouring into licensing and upkeep on each of these devices to reinstate art classes and music classes, or cooking classes, or field trips, or shade structures for playgrounds, or literally anything else. In my quest to find the right school for my son, I have toured numerous NVUSD public schools, and each one has told me the same thing. iPad time is a requirement of the school district. You may not opt out, and ultimately, how much time children get on iPads is up to the individual teacher. With limited options, if you do not want your kid on a device, one must turn to private school at an out-of-pocket expense, or the one iPad-free charter school with a waitlist a mile long, meaning it is so difficult to get in that it renders itself not a choice at all. This is unacceptable. We have to do better. And this isn't just about whether or not someone likes or approves of iPads. Seventy percent of Napa kids scored below state standards in math and 58% in reading and writing, so clearly something isn't working. Let's acknowledge that we have a lot to learn when it comes to technology, that maybe we need to shift our entire paradigm on how we use technology in this district, but let's start by getting rid of the iPads in our TK classrooms, where kids spend approximately three hours in class, and our kindergartens, where young five- and six-year-olds are entering school for the very first time. This is not a controversial issue. Young children on screens has been proven dangerous time and time again. Let's take our money and our resources and put them into items that will help our children develop into well-rounded individuals. Thanks for listening, and I do hope you all will reconsider the digital strategy surrounding our youngest schoolchildren. Thank you.
Thank you.
What was the last name of the speaker?
Um, is your, excuse me, is your last name Irvin?
Yeah.
That's great. Okay. And our next speaker is Mike Kelly. Thank you.
I just want to follow up from Ari's talk real quick. There's over 125 applicants for TK at Stonebridge. There's a reason why people are choosing that school, and it's because it doesn't have technology. Most of those parents don't know anything about a Waldorf education. They just want an education like they received as a child, as you received as a child. Are you digitally illiterate? We're here on a Zoom meeting. It's something that is coming natural to children. A two-year-old in 30 seconds is using an iPad intuitively. It's not something that needs to be taught in schools, and the testing, as Ari also mentioned, is not showing that this is a successful program. The option of not being able to opt out or not having a second school that might be just a traditionally-based school with chalkboards, with papers, with pencils, that's an option that is not here. As a child, I went through public school. I learned in science that you need a control. There's no control here. You have one school that is not opted into, which is a Waldorf-based school, but there is no traditional school in this district that doesn't use technology. The American Pediatric Association has recommended an hour a day for children five, two to five, to be on technology, to have screen time, and over that leads to things like obesity, things like social and educational underdevelopment. So, if there's a Promethean board and a required 40 minutes on an iPad for my five-year-old coming into TK every day, that hour is met. I was in a classroom and watched a kindergarten teacher turn the Promethean board on to get five-year-olds to dance. That's not using it as an educational resource. That's being lazy. So, it's time to go back to the same educational principles where teachers were artists. Teachers had skills, and teachers were not using the exact same lesson plan from school to school, grade to grade, across the board. There's a reason why you had favorite teachers as children, and that's because they excelled at what they did. They taught you differently than the norm, and they reached out, and it created relationships that you still today know that teacher growing up, what their name was, and there's a reason for that. It's not because they put you on a screen, it's because they formed emotional relationships with their students and taught you with their heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Mr. Kelly and Ms. Irvin, if we could get your information so that we could follow up with you, I'm going to have Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings, who oversees instructional programming, she'll follow up. Sure.
Okay, so, now we're on H, Reports. Board of Education and Student Board Representative, tell us what you've been up to. Oh, sorry. Comments online?
Mr. Michaels.
Mr. Michaels, excuse me, sorry. Are there any public comments online?
Yes, we do have one. Karina Servente, go ahead, please.
Karina.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, thank you. You almost forgot me. So, thank you for the opportunity to share. I've heard of the possibility of testing flexible days at Napa High. I also heard that there might be a survey that went out or is going out for parents and students, and I was wondering why not allowing American Canyon High School to pilot a flexible day as well? I can only share my experience. My freshman at American Canyon High School wants to pursue film studies, but American Canyon High School, the only film class, is only available to seniors. So, a flexible day would allow him and other students, as early as next year, to explore film and other careers that, again, are not available to them at the moment. So, I would like to ask the board and the staff to please consider American Canyon High School as a school to test this amazing opportunity in allowing American Canyon families and students to have the same opportunities as Napa schools. It is of such importance because, you know, not everybody wants to be a nurse, not everybody wants to go into financial career, and it's just the opportunities, at least for film, are very few in AC. We are not, you know, my family is not able to commute to Napa or New Tech to, you know, have the opportunities that that school offers. So, yeah, it's heartbreaking to see your kid wanting to do something that he's not able to pursue at his school at the time, at this time. So, please, let's try to, you know, think outside the box and include American Canyon and the testing beta, I don't know what you want to call it, but flexible days would be an amazing and great way to have our, you know, our community to experience all these other careers, career paths. So, thank you, and hopefully I can get a follow-up from somebody as well. I'll be waiting, otherwise I'll keep on asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Servente.
Yeah, Ms. Servente, thank you very much. I will have Director Monica ready. We'll send you a response regarding the work that's happening in the Instructional Division as we're exploring schedules and pilots of schedules in alignment with some of our strategic visioning work for the future, so, thank you. So, thank you.
All right. Now, we will move on to H Reports from Board of Education and Student Board Representative.
Good evening, everyone. Since we last met, January 19th, I attended the Energy Conservation Task Force meeting led by Mr. Mike Pearson. January 23rd, I met with Ms. Reddy and a few other students to discuss the learning walks that we had done on January 11th. And that same day, I attended the Student Advisory Council meeting here at the District Building. And during that meeting, we reviewed and discussed the graduate and adult portraits that are a part of the strategic planning process. Friday, February 2nd, I participated in a student panel for Leadership Napa Valley. Dr. Mercedi asked myself and a few other students questions that allowed us to share thoughts about various aspects of our education. I really enjoyed the opportunity to speak. But more than that, I enjoyed the opportunity to listen to my peers and share their experiences and opinions. The panel wasn't just high schoolers. There were also three middle school students, which I thought was really awesome to have, because their answers were really insightful and very honest. And it gave me a lot of hope for future student leaders of our, our district. After that panel discussion, I toured a group of Leadership Napa Valley members around Napa High School, showing them different classroom environments in action. We went into an AP class. We went into a prep class and a CTE class. Saturday, February 3rd, I attended, I attended Napa High Basketball Senior Night against Sonoma, which we won. Winter sports are ending and spring sports are starting. So a lot of our sports are having their senior nights. And then, lastly, Tuesday, February 6th, I went to Unidos Middle School to speak about Napa High to our incoming freshmen. My younger sister was a part of that group, so that was pretty cool to see. I'm excited to see how she likes Napa High. A lot of the eighth graders were very interactive and engaged. And one thing that we highlighted in our presentation was different ways for incoming freshmen to get involved in their school, because I think it's super important for that transition period for freshmen to have, you know, a team or a club or an activity that helps them build connections with students in higher grades and students in their grades that, you know, continue throughout high school. So with that, I conclude my board report.
My report is, um, more related to our activities. As board members, we have many times in weeks full schedules. So just with that is, for me, pretty, pretty busy. So it's already in our board packet today, so you'll see the minutes of our conversations and approval, consideration for it, our Board Advisory for Policy Committee. And then we had a good Saturday, kind of a good, long day, but it went quite fast. And sure, my fellow Board Trustees members are going to share their parts of that. But for me, the, the Saturday where we went over NVUSD bond study and session facility of our facilities, just the, the level of, of present, the presentation of the state of our schools. And I'm a very visual person, so aside from not only visiting our schools and seeing the dilapidated buildings and things that are just not in the state that we would want our staff and our, and our students to be in, but to have our NVUSD team explain in detail and just the difficulties that they face was just really important as someone in, in my seat, as we continue to make future decisions and planning. So I just wanted to thank the team for their time and effort for putting all of that together, because it's instrumental for us to be well-informed as we make decisions for the future. So just wanted to take that time to thank everybody for that. Thank you.
All right, good evening. So over this last few weeks, I was able to actually participate in quite a few things, which was really great. The, the first one being on the 23rd, the NVUSD Employees of the Year presentation, which was really cool. We got to hear and, and, and see a number of employees from classified through teachers and managers, and really learn about some of their special contributions to the district and to their, to their classrooms and to their various sites. And it was great. It was, it was a lot of fun, and it looked beautiful. So congrats to everybody who was involved with that. Also did on the 24th, the, my first time in the Board Advisory Curriculum and Student Support Committee meeting. So that was also very eye-opening and informative. On the 29th, had a, our semi-annual governance meeting with Dr. Mercedi and myself, where we went over some of the governance topics that we run into on a current, often basis. On the 1st of February, along with Trustees Gracia and Trustee Water, I was able to tour the future home of the Mentis organization that we partner with at the Blue Oak School location, the current Blue Oak School location, and hear about their plans for expansion and their ability to take on additional clients, which was great. And then also, on the 3rd, we had, as mentioned, the Board Facility Study Session, which was, again, very eye-opening to see in vivid color all of the various challenges that our facilities teams dealing with, and the need there for us to, to really commit to improvement and investing some money. And then last night, again, a really cool event, the Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year Celebration, where we heard from seven different students. Most of them were in NVUSD schools, Napa High, Vintage, Amken High School. And the winner actually was a junior from Napa High School, Liza Coronado, which was, she was great. They were all great, to be honest with you. To hear kids go up there at 16 and 17 years old and be very eloquent and very, very well-spoken in a crowd of probably 150 strangers was, was very cool. And to see some of their accomplishments and see how they're really growing and supporting their community was very impressive. So that concludes my report.
I attended the League of Women Voter Debate, and I went to see if education would be addressed. It was not. I went to Senator Dodd's Virtual Town Hall, the January 2024 recap. My interest was his take on the governor's overall budget and the impact on education. I too attended the NVUSD Employee of the Year. Thank you to Assistant Superintendent Page and her team for honoring those that work so diligently to serve the students of Napa Valley Unified. Trustee Riser Chu and myself toured the new Mentis location. And Mentis has thoughtfully reconsidered the Blue Oak Middle School site to provide expanded support and care to our community. I attended a political fundraiser where one of our state senators, once again, publicly reiterated the importance of school board trustees and the role they play in education in our communities. And I thought my peers would enjoy the acknowledgement. I had my CSBA Governance Call with Luann, with Luann. A huge congratulations to the American Canyon Academic Decathlon Team for bringing home third place. I had coffee with Barb Franco and had the privilege of getting a truly personalized history lesson on NVUSD. It was great. I attended the Board Advisory Policy Committee meeting. I attended the, oh, the NVUSD Board Facilities Study Session. I'll let other trustees talk about that. Attended the Hart Horn Foundation, which is dedicated to creating kindness opportunities in some of our elementary schools. The Napa County Board of Education meeting has been moved to February 13th. And that concludes my report.
All right. On the 23rd, I also attended the Honoring Our Employees Meeting. It was very well-done. And then on the 24th, the Curriculum Meeting. On the 26th through the 29th, I was at the CSBA Board of Directors Retreat, where we were establishing some norms and protocols for that board and doing some of the business of the board. And then on the 1st, I visited Mentis's future campus, which was looking quite impressive. And then on the 3rd, the Facility Study Session. And then on the 6th, I attempted to attend the NCOE meeting, but that was canceled because they didn't have any power. And that concludes my report.
So since the last meeting, I also attended the NVUSD Employee of the Year Celebration. That was, it's always awesome every year. And I think you outdid yourself again this year. On the 24th, I also toured the new Mentis facility. Thank you for all the organizers and the leaders of Mentis for making that happen for us. On the 24th of January, I attended the Supervisor Candidate Forum, put on by the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce for the two candidates that are running for the seat that, that's going to represent American Canyon. And no education was not on there.
On the 27th, I was actually attending in person to support the ACHS Academic Decathlon Team as they competed in the regional competition, where they brought home 35 medals and got third place in their division. So really proud of them. And they will be going to the state competition the first weekend of spring break. So hopefully, you know, we'll hear great news from them. On the 29th, I went to the Sonoma County Office of Education to attend the Budget Perspectives Workshop put on by Capitol Advisors. And on the 2nd of February, I met with a Measure A2 Citizens Bond Oversight Committee member with Assistant Superintendent Mike Pearson and Kelly Jurgensen. And the meeting went really well. They had some concerns, and they really felt heard. And it led to really productive conversations. And I think it makes their future meetings much better. On the 3rd, I also attended the Facility Study Session. This week, on the 6th, I was part of the NVUSD DEIB Steering Committee meeting, along with Trustee Riser. And that night, I, I attended virtually on a hybrid meeting of the ACHS ELAC Committee, where they talked about LPAC testing. So that was really informative to understand what that all involves. And the parents were really engaged with questions of how they can help their children. And today, earlier today, 8 o'clock, I attended the, a field trip with the ACMS Robotics Students. We went to UC Davis and visited and toured the Miticulture and Enology Department along with, well, organized by Ms. Tammy Lee, the robotics teacher. And I attended that field trip along with NCOE Board of Education Trustee Cindy Viederman and Director Monica Reddy of NVUSD. And they had a tour of their winemaking lab. They got to measure sugar content in juice, along with the pH of those same grape juices. And all of their favorites was tasting jelly beans of all the different flavors they might find in wine. So that's always fun. And they kept, I guess, they, they finished off with a free lunch at their dining hall. So I think we got a lot of students interested in perhaps considering UC Davis as, as a, as a possible future college option.
We'll have to counter that with a UC Berkeley trip.
Yes, I think we may have to take them to, to Cal one day. But it was, it was a wonderful experience. And I always love going on field trips with students because you just get to just find out what their interests are and whether it really, like, speaks to them. So thank you to Ms. Tammy Lee for inviting me along. And that concludes my report.
Okay, a lot of repeats from my fellow trustees. On the 23rd, I attended the Employee of the Year Celebration. Many thanks to Assistant Superintendent Page and your staff. I think it speaks well about the culture of our organization, that we put on such a meaningful and heartfelt celebration and a special, it's a special event. On the 24th of January, I had a phone meeting with a community member, Jim Wilson, who's the, one of the advisors for our students for, schools for climate action. Just got filled in from him about, you know, what the, our student leaders in the community. We have two co-presidents this year, one at Napa High and one at American Canyon High School. And they have been very busy within the school district and then also out in the community, continuing to sound the alarm about the climate emergency. So I'm grateful to, to Mr. Wilson, but grateful really for his support of the amazing student leaders and the cultivating that empowerment and leadership that we certainly need in this world for our, for our future leaders. I also had the Curriculum and Student Support Committee meeting that day and the tour also of the future site for Mentis at the current Blue Oak Campus. Thanks to Director Rob Weiss, to Jenny Olson, and Liz Marks for sharing the vision. It's really an exciting thing that's happening in our community. And our capacity to serve adult and teen needs for mental health and connection here in our community are really going to be expanded. So that was a great day. February 1st, the Policy Committee meeting. February 3rd, again, the Board's Study Session on Facilities. Many thanks to the team for the clarity, you know, the sort of brutal reality that we, that was shared with us about the state of our facilities and the, the long list of pressing deferred maintenance needs that, that in a way are kind of eating us alive, you know? The case in point, the, the rainstorm last weekend and the damage to, to some of our campuses. So it's really important, as Trustee Gonzalez-Mara said, you know, knowledge is power. And in our position, we need to really have all that information. So that was an excellent study session. That night, I rushed off to the Acappella Extravaganza at the Uptown. And I want to thank the three high school acapella groups for giving a stellar show. Of course, the Host Group, Napa High's Vocal Music Workshop. And also, American Canyon High School's public display of acapella, PDA, and Vintage High Vocal Music Workshop, all performed, along with three college groups, and a professional headliner that was pretty mind-blowing. So it was a great show. It's always a great show. Thanks to Dave Ruan in particular for pouring his soul into that for the community. On February 6th, that was just this week, the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belongings Steering Committee met again. As always, it's just a very meaningful and important investment of our time in this organization. I'm grateful to be part of that group. And then last night was the Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year Celebration. So that was just inspiring and amazing. And I'm going to name out the seven finalists who had to get up on stage and give a speech. And so six out of seven of those Boys and Girls Club finalists, Youth of the Year candidates are NVUSD students. We did have, from the Napa Clubhouse, William Perez is a student in an alternative program. Edmundo Gonzalez is a student at Vintage High School and featured from the American Canyon Club. We had Michaela Grogan from ACHS, Melody Condor from ACHS, Audrey Aliga from ACHS, and Madeline Davis from ACHS. And the winner was, as Trustee Hart said, Liza Coronado, Napa High Junior. All seven of them were incredibly inspiring. And I just continue to be grateful for the amazing partnership that we have with Boys and Girls Club, both here in Napa and in American Canyon. So thank you to them for their continued dedication to the youth of our community. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Well, we've all been busy, okay? I've had the usual community outreach, and it's election season. Some people are actually reaching out to me. I also attended the Budget, the Budget Workshop along with Trustee Chu in Santa Rosa on the 29th. You know, I had a couple of Zoom and, and meetings with the superintendent. I also toured Blue Oak, very exciting. The old Blue Oak Middle School. And it's very exciting, the plans that Mentis has. I also attended the acapella event, which was just absolutely out of this world. That was, on the same day, we had, but the next day, we had a session on facilities. And just in time for Mother Nature to show us who is boss that night, you can stop, I got the message. And, but it's, it's always good to know what needs to be done. On Monday night, I went to Book Mine. They had a Black History Month event, and it was a discussion of the book, The 1619 Project. And I got to meet Professor Dale Allender, who wrote our Ethnic Studies textbook. And I also visited Napa High School on Tuesday, dropped in on Ms. Urtado's Ethnic Studies class, which was really very good. And I observed writing and note-taking going on. And then I went over and said hello to Mrs. Valasoplas. And they were having a discussion on Hamlet. And they recited the soliloquy for me. And they were also studying and taking notes and, you know, very deep discussion and getting ready for a quiz tomorrow, I believe, is their quiz. ready for a quiz tomorrow, I believe, is their quiz. And that was fun. And then I, the NCOE meeting was canceled, so I did go to the Boys and Girls Club and sat with Trustee Hart. And we had just a wonderful time. It was great seeing the students and meeting some of their parents. And I think that's it for my report. Okay, next on the agenda are Board, whoops, not Board Representatives Reports. Okay, Special Education Community Advisory Committee.
That was canceled. They'll reschedule.
Okay, City of American Canyon Liaison Reps.
Have not met.
City of Napa Liaison Representatives.
We have not.
Town of Yountville Liaison Representatives.
We did not meet.
Okay. Superintendent and Executive Staff Reports.
Great, thank you, President Water. Good evening, NVUSD trustees and community. You'll hear a lot of parallels to what's been shared by the trustees, but I also want to start out with a giant thank you to Assistant Superintendent Dana Page and the Human Resources Team for doing such an extraordinary job a couple of weeks ago, honoring employee excellence at the Celebrating Our Outstanding Employees event. I love learning about how specific employees in our organization do their day-to-day work with such pride, high standards, and an unwavering commitment to our students. And I have to admit that I just love to watch Assistant Superintendent Page when she embodies her best MC energy in a sparkling shiny outfit. So it gives a real awards recognition feel. So thank you, Ms. Page, for you and your team's hard work. I also want to thank Assistant Superintendent Mike Pearson. Albert D'Souza, our Director of Maintenance and Grounds, and Gloria Aguiar, our Director of Operations, for their responsiveness during the storm this weekend. They were here working on campuses all day on Sunday, here early on Monday morning, ensuring that our campuses were safe to successfully open schools on Monday after what was considered a life-threatening storm here in Napa. So thank you to your team and all of your hard work. I also want to give a shout out to one of our newest principals, Kate Lindman at West Park. Last week, I conducted a school site visit there. We walked several classrooms where we observed students demonstrating high levels of engagement. I was really excited to observe some of our primary grade teachers at West Park using their letters training in action with students. And I also want to congratulate Principal Lindman for successfully navigating the first half of her first year as an NVUSD principal. It's clear that she's working really hard on building relationships with students, staff, and the entire West Park community. In addition, as was mentioned by Student Trustee McGrath, I want to share that last Friday, I had the pleasure of hosting part of Leadership Napa Valley Education Day, along with Deputy Superintendent Josh Schultz from the Napa County Office of Education and Dr. Torrance Powell from Napa Valley College. I wanted to recognize the several students who kicked off the day with that engaging and inspiring student panel. They really just wowed the Leadership Napa Valley Fellows. I want to take a moment to recognize who were the participating students. So from Silverado Middle School, we had not Janquitz, but Annie Polakiewicz, seventh grader, Dylan Polakiewicz, also a seventh grade student at Silverado, so they're twins at Silverado. From Unidos Middle School, we had Maely McConnell, who's an eighth grader. From Napa High School, we had Isabella Storms, a ninth grader, Alina Seja Delgado, who's an 11th grader, Finn McGrath, of course, our 12th grader. And then American Canyon High School, from American Canyon High School, we had Lana Watchhorn, who's also a 12th grader. So they were just extraordinary. The students did a fantastic job of providing a student perspective on critical topics impacting K-12 California public schools and impacting, of course, the Napa Valley Unified School District. They spoke to the following topics: declining enrollment, mental health, state testing, career readiness, and the impact of the pandemic on youth today. So thank you for all of your significant contributions to making that day a success. As Student Trustee McGrath mentioned, after the student panel, the cohort of Leadership Napa Valley Fellows enjoyed guided tours at Napa High School, Silverado Middle School. We then proceeded to Camille Creek at NCOE and then finished up the day at the Napa Valley College. So that was just a fantastic day of learning. The Leadership Napa Valley participants expressed lots of gratitude for the inspiration and learning the experience of that day provided. So it was great to host. Lastly, I also want to congratulate the Boys and Girls Club of Napa Valley for hosting the Youth of the Year event last night at the Uptown. This year, I had the privilege of finally serving as a judge. Most of the youth were NVUSD students, as been mentioned by the trustees. And it was really amazing to immerse myself as a judge in their application materials leading up to the event and learning about their incredible personal stories. It was a lot of work. It's a very rigorous application process for them. But I found myself, despite it being quite laborious, I found myself feeling pretty blessed that I got to really do a deep dive into the personal lives of these young people. After last night, I felt so reassured that our future's in great hands with these amazing young people growing and developing their gifts, all while teaching us that overcoming adversity can actually become a superpower. So it was just really fantastic to witness that. And I'm just going to do a little mama shout out. My son is a senior, and he went through all of the college application process. And, you know, he did some early action and early decision. And yesterday, he learned that he got accepted into his most desirable school. So he's off to Tulane University in New Orleans in the fall. And so he's really, really excited, and it's nice. It takes a little bit of the pressure off at home once the, you know where you're going. So congratulations, Missel. I am very, very proud of you. And I'm always about go Bears, but it looks like I'm going to incorporate roll wave into, into what I say around here sometimes, right, trustee Water? It is the green wave. Okay, with that, we're going to pass it on to the Assistant Superintendents. And we will start with Assistant Superintendent Dana Page, who oversees the Human Resources Division.
All right, thank you. This is going to be my subdued board meeting energy. Good evening, President.
Where's your sparkly outfit?
Not today. Okay, thank you. So, good evening, President Water, Board of Trustees, Dr. Masetti, and Student Board Representative McGrath. The Human Resources Department has been hard at work, and I'm happy to share a few updates in key areas related to our strategic plan. So related to Goal Two, Effective Employee Relations and Resource Management, I'm pleased to share that we're making progress on a new three-year contract with CSCA, our Classified Bargaining Unit. So far, we have tentative agreement on three articles and are deep into another one. We have moved deliberately and with a great deal of attention to ensuring our contract reflects the latest changes in ed code and that contract provisions continue to meet the interests of CSCA members and the needs of the organization. It's been an amicable process, even as we disagree on the details, because we have been equally focused on understanding everyone's interests and working towards shared benefit. I'd like to thank the negotiations team members representing CSCA and management for their continued commitment to a positive and productive process. In preparation for staffing, teaching, staffing teaching positions in the classroom for next year, it's critical that we know the vacancies we will have as early as possible. To encourage teachers considering retirement or resignation to tell us of their plans as soon as they've decided, we offered an early tell incentive of $1,200. It's working, and we immediately heard from over 12 teachers just this week. This helps us get ahead of the hiring curve, so we can ultimately hire the best candidates in this tough market. In partnership with Business Services, HR has contributed to Goal Four, Tactical, Proactive, and Efficient Asset Management, in a couple of ways this past month. First, we are co-chairing the Health Benefits Committee. This is a group of representatives from all three of our bargaining units and management who are working with a consultant to examine our medical benefits plans. Our goal is to compare our current plans, our current plan, which is through CalPERS, with what other providers in the marketplace may offer and determine if we can improve our healthcare plan offerings for employees. We've had two meetings since we returned from winter break with lots of learning about insurance pools, plan types, and all of the factors that go into rate setting. Next time we meet, we will have the opportunity to review proposals from other pools and compare them to what we have with CalPERS. And speaking of insurance, I had the opportunity, as the President of the Board of North Bay School Insurance Authority, to attend our annual strategic planning session and represent the interests of NVUSD. There is kind of a misconception that school districts have an insurance company that pays property liability and workers' compensation claims. And actually, for decades, school districts and county offices have had to create shared risk pools to manage and pay claims. That is what NBSIA is, is a shared risk pool. And together, we manage risk and liability and set rates for the member school districts and payout claims. And when we work together and put good practices into place, our district's general fund saves money. I am pleased to say that NVUSD has done a great job in implementing important safety programs like shoes for crews, ergonomic evaluations, risk boot camps for managers, just to name a few. And that has helped us to continue to reduce our costs and redirect funds back toward the classrooms. Lastly, we are launching a well-being at work survey for every employee. It'll be sent out via email, and it can be completed on a laptop, desktop, or a mobile device in English or Spanish. This is in order to, oh, it will be confidential, I want to assure everybody, so that we can encourage candor. And the survey data is going to be collected and summarized by a third party. In this first year, we'll get a baseline of how well we are doing in creating a positive and inclusive organizational culture, Goal Five, and then administer it annually to measure the impact of our workplace culture initiatives. I hope everyone will take just a handful of minutes to let us know how we're doing. Thank you, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Page. Next, we have Assistant Superintendent Mike Pearson, who oversees Operational Services.
Good evening, President Water, NVSD Board of Education trustees, Student Board Representative Finn McGrath, Dr. Masetti, and members of the community. It's always a pleasure to give you an update on Operational Services. And Custodial Operations, Director of Operations, Galer Guire, oversees the custodians at all district school sites. But what I don't think many individuals know is Director Guire also oversees Service and Supply plus the district warehouse. Service and Supply is responsible for receiving and organizing all deliveries to the warehouse to the district and pulling and then delivering these school supplies from the warehouse to all school sites. And lastly, Service and Supply moves a variety of items throughout the district, such as school furniture and equipment. Brian Conatton and Gabe Perez are the two individuals responsible for these tasks, which they complete rain or shine and always with a smile. Gabriel's been with the district since 2015, and Brian has worked for the district since 2000. Next time you see either individual, please offer them a heartfelt thank you for their contribution to NVSD. You will not miss Brian. He's a rather large individual and likes the Raiders. You're welcome, Brian. Maintenance and Grounds, Director of Maintenance and Grounds, Albert D'Souza, oversees the maintenance of all school sites, along with taking care of the grounds and fields, as you know. His leadership is second to none and was on full display this past weekend and earlier this week post the severe weather events. When I called Director D'Souza Sunday morning at roughly 10:30 a.m., and trust me, he did not want to answer that phone, and asked him to mobilize his staff to start visiting campuses and assessing for any damage, Director D'Souza did not hesitate. He immediately reached out to all the lead workers who answered their phones and then put a plan in place to have the lead workers and other staff evaluate the condition of each campus, which is how we discovered the damage at Silverado Middle School. I want to commend Director D'Souza and the following lead workers: Dennis Gonzalez, Hector Gallegos, Tika Lara, Justin Nigarmo, Brian Bassinet, and Dave Jevus for their responsiveness and dedication to NVSD. Additionally, Director D'Souza and the lead workers continued to demonstrate their initiative by assembling the maintenance staff on Monday and enacting an additional plan to clean up the debris on all the campuses, along with addressing the power outages that were occurring at a few sites. One of the core values in operations is customer service, and this trait was clearly on display by all employees as we worked through the number of weather-related issues. On the note of the weather-related issues, I'd also like to commend the Technology Department and the Food Service Department for their responsiveness to sites without power by setting up hotspots for the office personnel and adjusting meals, and the flexibility demonstrated by the staff and administration at the effective school sites. Some of us in this room know it is not easy to keep school open in less than ideal conditions, but school site staff did persevere, and we appreciated all their hard work, as well as everybody's hard work on that. And then lastly, we're going to have a little presentation today from Food Service. So I'm really excited and pleased to introduce our Director of Food Service. This is Kristin Teakell. You may have never seen Kristin before, but this is who she is. And she's in the middle of her fourth year with NVSD. Director Teakell has done an outstanding job taking the helm of our food service program. Her passion for healthy nutritious meals is clearly evident with the menu offering she and her staff curate daily. Serving up to 14,000 meals daily, combination between the breakfast and lunch meals, is not an easy endeavor, and it requires a high degree of organization, communication, coordination, and structure in order to serve this many meals. Through exemplary leadership, Director Teakell has continued to meet this challenge. And tonight, she's here to provide a brief presentation on the upcoming Plastic Free Day in our work food service program. So Kristin, take it away.
Hello? Can you hear me? Thank you. Thank you for, oh, okay. It's green. Is it just me not talking loud enough? Okay. All right. Thank you so much for the introduction, Mike. I'm honored to be here tonight to talk about this exciting initiative. And I'd first like to say thank you to Board President Waters and to all of the Board Trustees members and Dr. Masetti for allowing me this opportunity to talk about an exciting upcoming event called Plastic Free Day. So as Mike said, I'm Kristin, the Food Service Director, on my fourth year, leading the department. And for those who might not know, the Food Service Department goes by the name NOSH, which stands for Napa's Operative for School Food Health. And I would like to share our mission statement. So our mission at NOSH is to support academic achievement by providing our students with delicious and healthy meals served by caring professionals. We strive to purchase local food items, use quality ingredients, and prepare our meals from scratch. We do all this because we believe that healthy students are happy learners. We have a wonderful team constantly working on exciting and innovative projects. And one example of that great work is Plastic Free Day. So we're going to be serving breakfast and lunch without any single-use plastic. And a little background, in case you haven't heard of this amazing movement, it was started by a group of fifth graders in Brooklyn, New York. And there is a documentary about it called Microplastic Madness. And this documentary tells this great story of a group of really passionate kids who want to make an impact on the planet and reduce single-use plastic use in their cafeteria. So they partnered with their Food Service Department and came up with this great idea to, on this one day of the year, they're going to not use any single-use plastics. And it was such an empowering and powerful message. I think what they've done actually is created a Climate Action Day, and they invite other people, other school districts, to participate in this same concept, to go a day without using any single-use plastics. We first learned about this movement last school year. One of the schools we feed is Stonebridge Charter School, and they reached out to us. They shared a little movie trailer from the documentary and asked us if we could support them in doing a Plastic Free Day. And we did, and it was fantastic event. And afterwards, we thought, hey, we could probably pull this off district-wide. And not only that, I think we could do it at both breakfast and lunch. So we formed a committee, and we went over the menu, and we also just named what some of our single-use plastic sources were. And one of our biggest challenges is plastic cutlery, as we use that almost every single day. And then a lot of our breakfast items do come wrapped in plastic as well. On the flip side of that, a lot of things that we had going for us were that we don't use plastic cups or plates, and we typically don't use little individual packets of condiments. Those were wins for us. The next step was to develop some marketing materials. The Plastic Free Lunch Day movement has a whole webpage with tons of resources already prepared. And we just created some flyers and some social media posts that we'll be putting out. And we were going to share all those resources with site administration, so they have those to communicate with their families and their students and whatever way they would like to do that. And then we'll also be hosting a food service team training to go over the event and just make sure we're on the same page about which, you know, plasticwares we don't want to use that day. And then finally, yeah, the event's on April 19th. And afterwards, we're going to reflect on the impact of this event. And I did want to take a minute to talk about the menu, because the menu is what drives all of the work in food service and guides all of our decisions. So on breakfast, if there's something that's normally wrapped in plastic, it'll be wrapped in paper. And this idea actually inspired a new recipe. So we're going to be trying a new coffee cake recipe at our middle and high schools that we'll make ourselves. And then at lunch, you'll see a menu that features handheld items or, you know, burritos and sandwiches. And we have salad bars in all of our schools, but on this day, we're going to go one day without lettuce because, you know, we're trying to avoid the cutlery, although I do see kids eating lettuce all the time with their fingers. But for the sake of etiquette, we're going to go one day without lettuce. And as I alluded to earlier, our homemade ranch dressing is put into squirt bottles along with our other condiments, so we don't have to worry about that. There will still be ranch.
And yes. That's all they care about.
I know. Let's be, let's be real here now. Whatever it takes to get the veggies in, you know? But so, yeah, save the date. It's Friday, April 19th, which is the Friday before Earth Day. Earth Day is Monday, April 22nd. And we are estimating that we'll reduce over 14,000 pieces of single-use plastic going into the landfill this day. Thank you. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Director Teakell. And I know all the trustees will be happy to use their fingers on that day to eat food from our NOSH program. So thank you. So thank you.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Operational Services. And next, we have Assistant Superintendent Andrea Jennings, who oversees Instructional Services.
Thank you, Dr. Masetti. Good evening, President Water, Board Trustees, Dr. Masetti, and Student Board Representative McGrath and the NVUSD community. As Assistant Superintendent Pearson commented, the week started off with an intense storm that required tremendous flexibility from some of our school leaders. I would like to extend an offer of thanks to Principals Valargas, Zipman, and Tidal. You know, Principal Valargas is at Silverado, Zipman is at Vichy, and Tidal is at Bel Air for managing power outages and storm damage while leading schools this week. I also would like to appreciate Directors Christopherson, Ready, Manning, Knox, and Coordinator Drew Heron for supporting the storm-affected school sites by being present on their campuses on the days that they needed. I'm also pleased to report a significant achievement related to Annual Board Priority Two, focusing on reading and writing across the curriculum. This milestone was realized with the successful completion of the third through fifth grade district writing assessment, given in January with centralized scoring on Tuesday and Wednesday of this week by a dedicated team of elementary teachers. To ensure reliability of scoring across schools and grade levels, the first day involved meticulous calibration. Remarkably, the team scored a total of 3,300 writing samples over the two days. That's pretty remarkable. The third through fifth grade DWA format aligns with the upcoming CASP assessment in May. Students in third grade wrote to two sources, which means they had to read two sources and then write on a particular topic. And students in grades fourth and fifth wrote to three different sources and had to cite from those sources. The intentional timing of the district writing assessment in January allows teachers to receive a snapshot of student writing, enabling timely interventions to enhance students' writing skills ahead of the CASP assessment. I extend my gratitude to the teachers who dedicated their time to support this district writing assessment and to our district TOSAs who facilitated and organized it, as well as Director Matt Manning, who led it. This collaborative experience of evaluating student work samples and the opportunity to learn together across sites while sharing instructional insights was superbly exciting. Looking ahead, the K2 district-wide writing assessment is scheduled for late April. Our high school student services team are busy supporting eighth-grade students and families with that first important step in transitioning to high school. High schools opened their doors for Curriculum Night, so students could visit classrooms, meet teachers, and learn more about their options. Over the past three weeks, American Canyon High School, Napa High, and Vintage High counselors have been visiting middle school campuses to share the incredible courses and programs that each high school offers. Students received one-on-one counseling support with selecting their ninth-grade courses. Our ninth-grade students are the first students that are going to be enrolled in an Ethnic Studies and Health course. This is a response to AB 101, and the board approved the courses in the fall. We want to thank the Graduation Requirement Committee, composed of teachers, counselors, site administrators, and district staff who spent the last year analyzing student schedules, engaging in master schedule training, and developing resources such as sample ninth-grade plans and four-year plans to support students in this incredibly important transition. I'd also like to thank Director Ready, who led this work to ensure that the implementation of our Ethnic Studies and Health courses goes smoothly. Lastly, our middle school special education teacher on special assignment, Jennifer Gygax, has been supporting middle school special education teachers in implementing the Ordon-Gillingham-based reading instruction called SPIRE. This school year, 13% of students in Wendy Jinks Special Education Class at American Canyon Middle School, they have successfully returned to core instruction in English, thanks to the implementation of this program. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Great. Thank you for that thorough report. And lastly, we have Assistant Superintendent Ron Manguala, who oversees Business Services.
Thank you for the opportunity to update the board and the community. The Technology Department continues to work with the important task of upgrading and improving our technology infrastructure in an effort to keep up with the ever-changing standards and requirements in the technology landscape. We have started the exciting work of upgrading our Wi-Fi network, which, when completed, will offer the entire district faster and more reliable wireless access to the Internet and the important operational and educational resources available online. We have already completed cabling at several sites and are starting the engineering work on the Wi-Fi itself and are hoping to have everything ready by next school year. We also continue to focus on the importance of network and email security by rolling out our new anti-phishing software and training the NVUSD community. We are taking our users' internet safety very seriously. Are eager to see how these new systems will positively impact everyone at NVUSD. The ed tech team has been busy at school sites delivering fun swag to our top ed tech tool users and visiting classrooms, demoing how to use our ed tech tools, as well as presenting at staff meetings. The February Technology Times newsletter was emailed out on the first. It is full of important technology updates and February resources, including Black History Month and digital resources. Lastly, we're gearing up for our March 8th PD Day. Look for a variety of technology-related offerings, including a session titled Tech Boot Camp for Classified, hosted by our Technology Department employees. The enrollment team has finished processing open enrollment. All families who participated in open enrollment were either offered a seat or given a waitlist number by December 14th. In total, 887 families participated in open enrollment. Waitlists remain for a few non-boundary programs. The team is continuing to enroll students for next school year and is planning spring enrollment events in American Canyon. On the data and assessment front, I'm pleased to share that Directors Peter Booth and Sarah Knox have both been awarded the Jerry Lloyd Golden Legacy Award from Ares, the company which hosts our student information system. They're being recognized for their excellent and innovative work around tracking interventions, Ares Analytics, the early warning system, and designing workflows within Ares for MTSS teams. Peter and Sarah will be recognized in March at the annual Ares Conference in Sacramento. Their work together was truly a seamless collaboration between Business Services and Instructional Services, and we're excited to have them represent NVUSD. Business Services is currently working on the second interim budget report, which we brought to the board on March 7th. The team is also engaged in the early stages of budget development for the 2425 fiscal year. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Manguala. President Water, that concludes staff reports this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Masetti. Now we can move on to I, Approval of Consent Agenda. Background information on these items is provided to the board prior to the meeting. A common motion takes action without discussion on roll call vote unless discussion of items is requested by a board member.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Hart, and roll call vote.
Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Ricer?
Aye.
Trustee Shu?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Jenkewitz?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. Next is J, Presentations and Discussion Items. One, General Services. A, Introduction to California School Board Association Recommended Policy Updates, December 2023.
Yes, thank you, President Water. These are the policy updates from December 2023. As you read in the title of the item, they were reviewed by the Policy Committee, are being brought tonight for introduction, and we'll return to the March Board meeting for action.
Thank you.
All in an effort to keep our policies updated. It's just pretty impressive how we keep doing that. So I appreciate the work of the trustees and the staff, because, you know, those policy packets are dense.
They're chubby. They're chubby. Thank you for reading them. I was on that committee. I guess the word is robust.
Robust.
They're robust. That's our word. Okay. Two, Business Services. A, Enrollment Presentations, Secondary Teacher Staffing Formula and Average Class Size Data.
Adopt the low-tech version of Robson. I have some notes in a journal, and it is in cursive. It's been my theme lately, so I just kind of call it out. I'm practicing my sixth-grade cursive, because it's not very good. So, yeah. So again, thank you for the opportunity to update the board and the community about our Secondary Teacher Staffing Formula and some key data points. As part of the district financial recovery, we developed staffing formulas. You know, one of the key components of that is enrollment. And so historically, there was not, going back to, you know, prior 2019, 2020, there was not a strong alignment between enrollment data and centralized allocation of secondary teacher staffing. And so the Business Services Division worked really closely with Human Resources and some key principals. One of them is still here right now, Monica Ready, looking at like how we can look at secondary teacher staffing. And so we developed a formula for that, and we've adjusted it over time. And what I wanted to do is just, and we've talked about it before, I just wanted to just take some time to just very quickly show you some of the results of that and then just talk about some of the key ways that we do that and how we adjust it every year. And we have this thing called the Equity Addback, where they have the ability to adjust when you have a little extra money and kind of reduce class sizes and go in the reverse if we ever had to also. So next slide. And so NVUSD, again, we utilize a variety of staffing formulas. This ensures equitable distribution of resources. It also helps us make appropriate adjustments for declining enrollment. And so every year, as a part of the work and part of budget development, we work closely with our demographer to review the initial enrollment projections and then make adjustments. And with that data, we use that to develop our secondary teacher staffing allocations. And so again, student enrollment is a primary driver for secondary teacher allocation. We adjust it for a number of things. And so the first thing you do is when you're developing a staffing formula at the secondary level, you look at a couple of things. You look at the class max, which you never want to be at the class max, but you also have to look at the maximum contacts. And that's our starting point. So our starting point is you go down from the max contacts, which is 33 essentially. I should say, you start with 33 and you can work up to your max contacts. And then we start to make adjustments. And so over the years, again, we've adjusted it. What we do is we do allow, or we should say, we do an add-back for equity. Essentially, the add-back for equity, which I have a whole slide dedicated to, we use the unduplicated count to add extra staffing to our school sites, knowing that we want to bring down our class averages. We ensure that we have adequate space for our special education students. We also, what we do is we bring down our class sizes and our ELD class sizes. And so we're currently, we started funding them at about 24. And over the years, we reduced that down to 20. And so you'll see that reflected in our averages. We've brought down our PE class sizes, we've brought down our performing arts class sizes. And then there's a direct offset for the courses that are taught by, and so we, next slide. And so this is an example of some of the inputs, not all of them. The spreadsheet's actually much longer than that, and it's gotten a little bit better every year. But just some of the key points. And so you start with 33 for your comprehensive schools. At our continuation school, we start with 25. This year, we are actually increasing our equity-based add-back from 3% to 4%. But it actually turns out to be a larger number, which you'll see. Our ELD class average has gone down from 24 to 20. We worked last year with our teachers' union to reduce the class size for our PE classes. Some of the PE classes, they did have some excessively large classes. And so what we're doing is we're funding them at an average of 42. So a lot of times, they land lower than that. But what we wanted to do is make sure that PE classes wasn't the class that everything else was balanced on. Because what we noticed is that PE class sizes were sometimes close to 50, other classes were lower. And so we've tried to be very explicit how this allocation of FTEs used. In terms of mainstreaming, we fund our students who are in special day classes. They have the opportunity to take three electives, so that's directly spelled out in the formula, and then five courses for our resource students. Next slide. So this slide shows an example of how we do it. So we start by looking at the unduplicated count for a school. So this is an example of Napa High. And so their unduplicated count is 75%. You multiply that by their base allocation of 54%, and then we multiply that by 4%. And what you see, what that does is it adds an additional 1.66 FTE for that entire site to use. And so what does that do? It essentially buys down the class average. Next slide. And so what does the data show? So at the high school level, it looks good. I mean, there's always areas for improvement. So one of the things that we're doing is we're working really closely with our secondary principals to also talk about some of our goals that we have, to make sure that besides giving them an adequate allocation, you know, just really tuning up the master schedule so that we know that the use of that FTE is aligned with the goals for the school district. And so when you look at the high school level, we can see ELD, it's slightly higher than we want. Like sometimes it lands at 20, sometimes it lands a little bit lower. Right now, we're sitting at 21. Part of that is actually, at the high school level, we've actually had a really large increase of second language learners, of newcomers specifically enrolling in the district. And so that's probably what's driving up that average above 20 right there. And then when you look across the board, for the most part, on average, we're sitting around 30. So electives, 29, English, 30, math, 29, PE sitting at 38, not 50, but 38. And so if you look at that, our max class size is 46, so well below that. We're funding it at 42, science, 29, social studies, 30. VAPA max applicable and VAPA not applicable. Essentially, we have some VAPA courses where they can go up to the size of a PE course. And so again, we wanted to just kind of a similar thing where, you know, in the VAPA courses, they weren't getting to class sizes of 50. So we wanted to make sure and fund them at a higher level. World Language sitting at 29. Next slide. So our middle schools, we have slightly higher average in a couple of courses, you may notice. So science is a little bit higher. And also, we noticed that, where is it? Our VAPA classes are a little bit higher. So what we are doing here, again, one of the things that we did this year is we're going to increase the equity-based add-back to 4%. So this is all based on the 3%. You can see a difference here, a small difference in ELD where it is below 20. So again, we're seeing good data points on this. And all the data that you're seeing here, it's based on the tableau that Peter's team created, where we have the ability to actually look into every teacher's class and see what their enrollment is and regularly compare across the entire district and see what the average is, not only by school, by different courses. So again, we can maintain and take a look and see where we're at, where we're allocating these valuable resources if it's working the way we want it to. Next slide. So at Brown's Valley in Shear, you'll see that, again, we have actually even lower class averages, 25, 25, and 22. Obviously, we're talking about smaller groups of cohorts, but again, very, you know, very significant data here, not even close to our max of 32. Next slide. And then you can see value, much, much lower class averages. And I think that's the conclusion, unless there are some questions.
So I do have a question. You indicated that we made a conscious decision to reduce the size of the ELD classes approximately by four students. Sometimes, it looked like at middle school, we exceeded that. Has that made an impact on ELD student performance?
I don't know that I can make a concrete connection to that. So that was pretty recently done. I'd have to drill down at the data, but we do know that it's a lot more challenging to teach students that are just learning English. And so whether there's a direct connection to that reduction to an increase in scores or something like that, I wouldn't be able to speak to that. We know that it does take time to learn English, so I would anticipate that it would take some time. But I would imagine over time that we see an increase in our reclassification rate.
I'd love to see some data about that in the future.
Okay. Noted.
I appreciate that inquiry from Trustee Gracia, because there is so much assumption that lower class size will always impact student performance, right? So we're supporting the teacher because they have that high demand of having to teach academic content while supporting students who are newcomers and need a lot of language support. And it'll be interesting to kind of see the impact of that resource allocation and if it's rendering that benefit. But it will take a little bit of time, because this is just, I think, the consistent second year? Maybe the third year? Second year? Yeah.
Four students, one way or the other, is not like a transformational difference in the kind of things that you can do in your classroom, I would say.
Yeah. And part of it is too, is, you know, when you say it explicitly, then And part of it is too, is, you know, when you, when you say it explicitly, then people do it. When you, when you fund at 24, sometimes they land at 26. And that starts to really feel like a lot. When you fund at 20, you can see, even the funding at 20, it gets a little bit higher at the high school level when suddenly you get an influx of students. So, I mean, it's one of those things where I would say school district in general, that is a goal. It's not unique to Napa to fund ELD classes at the lower level. And so what we've done is we've just been really explicit about it and set it as an expectation.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the data. Thank you for the work on the staffing formulas. This was a big piece of us make sure, making sure that we were being responsive to our fiscal pressures. And you can see that when you get control of your position control and your personnel and how you're allocating the people, you can start to really get strategic around how you're targeting your resources based on program needs, so.
Nimble about that.
Well, especially given a lot of loose talk about overcrowded classrooms. It's nice to see that, you know, they're not. Thank you. Okay, next item is instructional services, 2023 to 24, LCAP mid-year monitoring report. Thank you.
Before I launch into my presentation, I did want to share, for example, that Assistant Superintendent Manguala mentioned about, you know, staffing at 20 or 24 to, you know, to one for, for students that are receiving ELD, especially at the secondary level. And that works to our benefit as we get students in the middle of the year. So in a previous school year, the 2020, 2021 school year, we had about 27 students who entered Napa High, who were newcomers to our schools. This year alone, as of, as of January, we've had 80 students who have entered. So we do have to sort of know that we probably need a little bit of space in some of those classrooms. So even though we may start with a low class size, sometimes we end up with a little higher because of the increase of students who are coming. So we just are always prepared to make sure that we're able to accommodate those students. Thank you. So now we'll start. Okay. Well, good evening again, President Water, Board Trustees, Dr. Masetti and Student Board Representative McGrath and the NBUSD community. This evening, I'd like to prepare, I'd like to present the mid-year progress update on the local control and accountability plan, also known as LCAP. Alongside me this evening is Dr. Peter Abud, the Director of Data and Assessment, who will provide data on the key metrics of our LCAP and information on the elements of the California School Dashboard that was released in December. Next slide, please. Although some of this information that we are presenting tonight has been shared with the board previously, when the LCAP public hearing was held at the June board meeting, several data points were not yet known. So we are coming back as a result of Senate Bill 114 to present a mid-year update on those metrics that may have not been included in June because the year hadn't ended, as well as provide an update on the funding that has been spent and the progress that we've made. Senate Bill 114 requires that every district provides an update to their board in the middle of the year, and it has to be completed by February 28th of every year. Next slide, please. So let's go over a couple of LCAP basics. We receive supplemental and concentration funds based on our unduplicated count. Unduplicated students are students who are multilingual learners, students who qualify for free and reduced lunch, our foster youth or temporarily unhoused. Our district percentage of students who have been, who are unduplicated has risen every year. We are approximately at 65% of our students fall into one of those categories. Also, our supplemental dollars have increased every year. We're about 30, at $30 million that we've received in supplemental and concentration funds. On the next slide, can you go to the next slide? It shows you, this is the budget overview for parents that we are required to provide parents in June as part of our LCAP. And then as part of this mid-year update, we were required to provide this information again. And you can see the percentage of our supplemental and concentration funds is increasing, but our LCFF funds are staying pretty steady. So that tells us something in terms of what we are, I'm going to experience over the next couple of years. Next slide, please. As a reminder, NBUSD has five LCAP goals to address student and family needs. Goal five was added this year specifically to address the needs of our students who are temporarily unhoused. Next slide, please. Our LCAP goals are taken directly from our strategic plan, our current strategic plan. You can see that goals one, three, and five, there's a direct connection between those and our LCAP goals. Students will graduate college and career ready as part of goal one. Students will experience responsive and engaging pedagogy, which we changed the language based on student feedback that no one understood what pedagogy was, so we changed it to student learning, or to engaging learning. And students will thrive socially, emotionally, and academically. Those are three that straight from our, those are LCAP goals straight from our strategic plan. Goal, the goal around parent engagement comes from goal three. And our LCAP goal around, there's, we have an LCAP goal embedded in goal four that addresses our equity-centered leadership and inclusive organizational culture. Next slide, please. The state also has priorities that they have established that have to be included in our LCAP. There are eight state priorities and they cover everything from ensuring that we hired fully credentialed teachers to student attendance, number of suspensions. So all of these metrics have to be included in our LCAP and aligned to a specific LCAP goal. Next slide. So goal number one, which is students will graduate college and career ready. There are four focus areas under this goal. Language and literacy. This tactic addresses the full implementation of comprehensive literacy initiative that ensures that all students DK 12, read, write, and communicate proficiently. Mathematics program support. Our current math data indicates an ongoing need to support consistent, effective implementation of state standards and math to ensure that all students can fluently and accurately calculate mathematical problems, apply mathematical reasoning, and be able to explain their thinking. We also know that in order to assess whether students are making progress, each year, we need to make sure that we have a, we develop a comprehensive assessment system, and that's part of this particular goal. And lastly, we are striving to increase opportunities for students to experience work-based learning. We have spent approximately $3.8 million as of the end of December to address the actions under this particular goal. Next slide, please. To measure our progress, we reviewed the following metrics. We always look at graduation rate. It's one of the state requirements. Just as a note, NBUSD maintains higher graduation requirements than the state of California and many districts. We require students complete courses, the A to G course sequence, and many districts do not have that requirement. Also, we look at our local assessment, which is, we also know is the STAR. This is given three times a year, as you know. And the STAR provides us the most recent data that gives us some insight in terms of our student achievement progress. We also look at data from the annual CASP. The data that you'll see tonight is from the 2022, 2023 school year. In November, you received or heard a presentation on those results. We will also share the percentage of students who are meeting A to G requirements so that they are qualified to enroll in a UC or CSU, also known as A to G. And then the last indicator in this particular goal is around college and career readiness, which this indicator resumed this year on the state dashboard. And Dr. Abud will share more information on the California State Dashboard presentation about the composition of this. So we'll talk about what the indicator, how students are scoring on the indicators, but he'll share far more detail when we get to the California School Dashboard data. And with that, Dr. Abud will now present the data disaggregated by student group that are identified in our LCAP on these five metrics. Next slide.
All right. Hello, everyone. I will now share some of the data over the last few years that is utilized in the LCAP. And the first is the high school graduation rate. This represents the, this represents students who graduated with a, graduated from high school with a standard high school diploma. And with the overall student population, this has hovered in the 91 to 94% range and has, and has been steady. For all the years displayed here, our graduation rate has exceeded that of the state average. And when we look at our multilingual learners, the baseline was 78.6% in the last, and in the last two years, we've seen an increase in comparison to that baseline here. The foster youth graduation rate at baseline was 78.6% and has seen a steady decline over the last few years. You'll notice the 2020, 2021 data has been omitted. This is because the number of 12th graders who were foster youth that year was less than 10, making it unreportable. Here, we show the graduation rates for students in temporary housing, socioeconomically disadvantaged students, and students with IEPs. There's, there's generally an upward trend from the baseline for these student groups. We've presented thoroughly on STAR data in the past, but here you can see the percentage of students over the last three fall screening windows. So we wanted to compare the most recent screening window to previous years. Who performed on the STAR reading test at standard met or exceeded based on the state benchmarks, which are designed to predict performance on the CASP. So there's a slight increase of 2% each year for the fall window since the baseline year. For STAR Math, there was a 5% drop from baseline to the following year with an increase the year after that, almost back to baseline performance levels. And here we share our English CASP results. These numbers represented the percentage of students who scored at standard met or exceeded. As we know, student performance has not returned back to baseline levels from before the COVID pandemic. Our multilingual learners have been experiencing a steady decline. Our re-designated students actually outperformed the overall population for all years. Foster youth CASP data was not available until 2020, until 2021, 2022, when 21.1% of students were at standard met or exceeded. During the most recent year, 0% of foster youth students met or exceeded standard on the CASP. Our students in temporary housing have also experienced a steady decline over the last few years. Students who are socioeconomically disadvantaged and students with IEPs have had a relatively stable performance within, within a couple of percentage points. I also want to take a moment here and point out, if you look at the end value, the number of students for our, for our groups does change from year to year, in particular when you look at our socioeconomically disadvantaged students. And you'll notice this on, when we break down other data points by student group, the number of socioeconomically disadvantaged students does increase significantly from year to year. And this is due to just better identification of our students on free and reduced lunch through our data confirmation process. So these are students that have been in our system generally, but just may not have been identified necessarily until we move to that process. Here, we break down the CASP scores for math. Like with English, Language Arts, our overall performance has not returned to pre-pandemic levels. Multilingual learners and re-designated students have experienced a steady decline. In the years, we have had foster youth data available, no students have met or exceeded standard on the math CASP. Students in temporary housing, socioeconomically disadvantaged students, and students with IEPs all experienced a drop in the year after our baseline data and have not returned yet to pre-pandemic levels. This slide shows the percentage of students who have met the A through G requirements. These are students who pass certain courses in various subjects with a grade of C or better and are eligible for admission into the UC and CSU systems. Our overall percentage started at 52.6% and has declined since then. Our multilingual learners actually experienced a steady increase over the last few years until the most recent year. And again, foster youth data is not available for 2020, 2021, but was largely, largely stable in 1920 and 21, 22. In the most recent year, though, 22, 23, 0% of foster youth completed A through G requirements. Students in temporary housing showed an increase over time with a large drop in the most recent year. Socioeconomically disadvantaged students, students showed a steady decrease over time. And students with IEPs decreased since the baseline year, especially in 2020, 2021, when 3.8% of students met, completed A through G requirements. And here we show the percentage of students who are considered college or career-ready. And as Ms. Andrew Jennings mentioned, I'll speak more exactly how a student qualifies for this later on in the presentation when I talk about the dashboard. For this data point, we only have, for this indicator, we only have two data points, the year prior to the pandemic and the most recent school year. Overall, we started at 44.6% prepared for college and career, but recently saw a decrease. Our multilingual learners follow the same trend and foster youth data, again, not available in our baseline year, but most recently, no foster youth students were considered college and career-ready. And students in temporary housing and students who are socioeconomically disadvantaged experienced a decrease from baseline until now, while, while our students with IEPs have remained largely stable. And with that, I will pass it back to Ms. Andrew Jennings.
Can you go back to the slide on the A to G?
Sure. This one or the?
Yes. Just a comment around A to G. One of the things that factors into how our students are doing is the, our grading practices during the pandemic in terms of students meeting the requirement for earning a C or better in courses. In the final, in the onset of the pandemic, during the spring of 2020, we went to a policy of a pass fail. So there are many students who may have passed classes and that was considered a C or better that would be counted in that. And then you see that, that might explain the increase in the year 21, 22 of students who are graduating. And then the, when we went back to our standard grading policies, it might explain the decrease. So that little bump kind of needs to be explained a bit. Okay. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Abud. Goal two seeks to ensure that students experience responsive and engaging learning. There are three focus areas under this goal. The, the funding allocated is directly at, is focused at providing professional learning for teachers on high-impact instructional strategies and ensuring that English language development occurs throughout the school day. We also added an additional focus area around school site support for newcomers. And as I shared earlier, around the significant increase of students that we're getting, this was a wise choice to put that as a goal in our LCAP. As of the end of December, we've spent $2.3 million on this particular goal. Next slide. There are two measures that we look at for this goal. We look at our English learner proficiency progress rate and our English learner reclassification rate. Next slide. And Dr. Boot's going to explain or go over, I mean, it's a couple of slides.
So, so again, one of the indicators on the dashboard is the English learner progress. And the chart on the left shows the percentage of students growing on the LPAC from one school year to the next. So the LPAC scores are broken down into four performance levels, but into six English learner progress indicator levels. So as long as students make progress from one of those six levels to the next, they're considered as though they're progressing. And so those are the percentages that you see on the left. It also includes students who have maintained a performance level of four, which is the highest performance level, not indicate, not progress indicator level, but performance level. And so those are students that maintain that level of four two years in a row. It's pretty typical that that number is very small because typically, students who earn a four on the LPAC are then re-designated the very next year and don't need to take the LPAC a second year. So it's very normal for that number to be, to be small. And then this slide shows the percentage of English learners who have been reclassified. As you can see, we see a steady increase from baseline until now. We continue to increase our reclassification rate, which is a celebration.
And as Dr. Abud mentioned earlier, around looking at our students who have been reclassified or re-designated, when you look at our academic achievement data and you saw that many of our students who are reclassified or re-designated score, you know, similar to overall, to our overall, or even higher in some areas. Goal three is focused on ensuring that our, all of our families can actively participate at all levels of the district by ensuring access to parent liaisons at each site and high-quality translation at district meetings. We've spent about $1.5 million on this particular goal. Next slide, please. We measure the effectiveness of our, of our efforts from the responses on our annual family survey. And we use that, even though we ask multiple questions, there are a couple of questions that we focus on. Next slide. And then the most current year, we had 733 respondents. We asked multiple questions on the survey, but closely examined the responses of these four questions. Do I feel welcome at my child's school? Do I know what teachers expect of my child? Are we receiving communication in a language that we understand? And is language a barrier for participation in school? We chose these four because those are some of that statistically tell us whether or not parents have that sense of belonging, whether or not parents know how, what their kid is working on and what they need to do to support them, and also just the communication. That was a really key point that parents brought up. I disaggregated the data based on our families who's, who have multilingual learners compared to our families who do not. And the, the results are similar, which is very impressive. And thus, we actually had 40% of the respondents were parents who had multilingual learners, which also is a pretty high return rate. So we can thank our parent liaisons who do a really good job of communicating with our families and making sure that they completed the survey. Yes, well, I mean, yes, it's pretty significant, yes. And you can see, I mean, the parents are feeling more welcome. I mean, they're, every single metric, the, it's gone up. Goal four focuses on ensuring that our students thrive socially, emotionally, and academically. This goal addresses the whole child. One key component of that is providing mental health support and services at each school site and fully implementing our multi-tiered system of support that works to intervene and address students' needs early. We have spent $7.6 million so far this year on this goal. As a result of the pandemic, we know that this is a tremendous need in terms of our intervention, in terms of intervening with mental health issues as well as academically. We use three different metrics for this to assess how we're doing. One is the California Healthy Kids Survey that's given every year to fifth, seventh, ninth, and 11th grade. Monthly, we monitor student attendance and address students who have missed more than 10% of the school year. These are the students that are considered chronically absent. And lastly, we look at our suspension rates. Next slide. On this slide, the year-over-year data is, for each grade level is clustered together. So you see fifth, seventh, ninth, and 11th. Except for seventh grade, we are sustaining or rebounding from the previous year in terms of student connectedness at school. We attribute that, we attribute that dip in seventh grade to the middle school redesign. And as we closed and consolidated schools and moved kids around, they took the survey in the spring of last year and many of them had, were new at the school site. At some sites, they had 40% of the students were new, given that middle school only has three grade levels. Third of the school leaves and then all the incoming schools and the shifting around. So we're, you know, hoping for, as the efforts that we've made to, to implement social emotional learning, flex period, and advisory, that we'll see some improvement in that in terms of connectedness to the school. The other thing that we look at is positive relationships with adults. There's a lot of research that shows if students have a positive relationship with one adult at school, that they perform better academically. Same trend continues with the exception of seventh grade. You see either a sustaining or an increase of students filling, of having, reporting that they have a positive relationship with adults on campus. And Dr. Boot will share data on chronic absenteeism and suspension. And yeah, this is the slide you want to see it go down.
Yes, yeah. Yes, yes, thank you, thank you. Yes. So the, so yes, as Ms. Andrew Jennings said, chronic absentee, for chronic absenteeism, we want to see decreases, not increases. And a student is defined as chronically absent if they are, if they miss 10% or more of the school year. And this dashboard indicator only applies to grades K through eight, not to high school. So it's not a surprise that after the COVID pandemic, we saw a big increase in, in chronic absenteeism, but there's at least been some recovery for our student groups. Our foster youth have actually, actually have a lower chronic absenteeism rate than pre-pandemic levels. And here we have the chronic absenteeism rate for the additional subgroup. So again, a big increase after the pandemic with a little bit of recovery. And then we also have our suspension rates, which, the suspension rate is defined as the percentage of students who are suspended at least one school, one day during the school year. Our overall suspensions have increased since our baseline in 1819. And we see a similar trend for our multilingual learners with a, with a slight decrease in the most recent year. Our foster youth suspensions have increased from 10.2% at baseline to 13% in the most recent year. And students with temporary housing have decreased slightly since baseline. I'd also like to mention that our expulsion rates are extremely low in NVUSD and have been consistently below 0.1% annually. And our socioeconomically disadvantaged students have experienced a slight steady increase in suspensions. Students with IEPs have an increase from baseline followed by a slight drop. And our Latinx and African-American students have been suspended at higher rates than the baseline year, with 9.6% of African-American students suspended at least one day in the 2122 school year.
Can you go back to the chronic absentee slide? So this, oh. No, this is fine. This data is for last school year and so we are monitoring the data this year. And so I'm happy to report that as of month six, we are at 17% district-wide in terms of chronic absenteeism. So substantial improvement over the 2022, 23 school year. Thank you. Our last goal focuses on increasing the achievement and engagement of our students who are temporarily unhoused. We have allocated resources to support our, what we call our McKinney-Bento Foster Youth Coordinator. McKinney-Bento is like, is federal legislation that's related to students experiencing homelessness. And specifically, there are funds that come from the federal government to help and support this in addition to the funds that we allocate for, through supplemental. We are measuring two metrics specifically to determine the effectiveness of our, of our actions. We again, we again look at chronic absenteeism and suspension rates. And you can see with the data disaggregated and we pulled out for students who are unhoused, as of January of 2024, their chronic absentee rate has dropped from 46.6% to 32.9. And then as of, the suspension, suspension rate has dropped from 6.3% to 1.9. So then what happens next? We are evaluating our needs and engaging with our educational stakeholders to determine what elements need to be included in our new three-year LCAP. In early June, the LCAP for the 2024 to 2027 school year will come to the board for a public hearing and then back again to the board for approval at the second meeting in June. One of the great things about the LCAP is you do have the opportunity to revise and edit every year. So as we go through next school year and determine that we want to better align our new strategic plan to our LCAP, we can make those adjustments. And then the last slide. As I wrap up, I want to thank the instructional division team for their focus and dedication to this work. I appreciate their commitment, the commitment and passion they bring to making our LCAP goals a reality. This is a team effort and we continue to work and trying to ensure that all students are learning. So thank you. That concludes my presentation.
Any comments from the?
Any comments from the board? Thank you.
Yeah, I got a couple of questions and a couple of comments. Are A through G requirements really helping all of our students? Or might some of them benefit from a non-A to G level course? Particularly, I'm thinking about students who are focusing maybe primarily on a career readiness path and not necessarily a college path?
I think that was a debate probably that happened when they, the district converted to requiring A to G at the high school level. One of our goals is to ensure that all students have the opportunity to go to college and that we're preparing them for that, if that is indeed what they want to do. And so the, having students meet the A to G requirements ensures that they have a well-rounded education. Some schools don't like, so some of the additions that are part of A to G are the, the world language requirement, the additional years of math. They, so those are some of the things that students wouldn't have to take. But I feel that being able to be multilingual, being able to speak to, you know, taking the additional math course that you might need to help you in your life beyond high school are very important. So we want to make sure that all students have the opportunity to take the classes that will prepare them to do that and the level of rigor that will prepare them.
I just, seems like maybe some students who are choosing not to go to college might have some benefit of a non-A to G requirement. I have to notice or mention at least that the CASP ELA results were declining. You know, we still had a decline even from the 2122 to the 2223 school year. And even in math, we, on our CASP results, continued to go in the wrong direction. So those things are concerning. I did want to highlight though, that the English Language Learner Reclassification Rates were headed in the right direction. So that is good news. And then I was just curious what you had done to nearly double the rate of survey takers from the baseline to the, the more current year?
I just can credit, I can credit that to our amazing communications team. I, I think that they were able to push it out to, we did it, we had several ways that we got it out, whether it was in the parent newsletter or the family newsletter, as well as sending out separate parent squares for the parent survey. And we tapped into our parent liaisons and encouraged them to do, complete the surveys at ELAC, at their ELAC meetings or other venues or the Family Resource Center. So I think we just had a much more comprehensive approach. And I do want to, and you mentioned the CASP data and I do, the thing with CASP, which is really hard, is it's data from, it's like a year old, like by, you know, it's, what we, what we are looking at is our STAR data and really monitoring how we're doing with STAR. And we are looking at the preliminary results from our winter STAR data and are very encouraged by the results. And I look forward to sharing that data with you as we get it finalized. So I'm really encouraged by that data. I think you'll see an increase in the number of students who are scoring a met or exceeded. So we continue to, to press on.
Gotcha. And one more question. Is there a hypothesis or explanation about why the, all the absentee rates seem to be going down except for African-American students?
We noticed that as we were putting together this presentation and that is something we're going to have to look at. And I think we'll have to drill down to individual students and see what's happening and individual school sites to see what's happening. We did notice that.
The numbers are small there, right?
The numbers are small, but that, that increase is noticeable.
And then I did have one more. What is the breakdown of our college and career readiness numbers as, between college readiness and career readiness?
I know that we have a significantly more students who qualify under college ready as opposed to career. And I know Dr. Boot probably has some data points to share with you.
Thank you for that great question. So students can qualify as, for, as prepared for college and career. And later on, I'll go through all the specifics of how they do that. But they can qualify, they don't qualify just as career ready or just as college ready. It's very possible that students qualify based on multiple criteria and then they're considered prepared. So I can't tell you that a certain percentage of students was solely one or the other, but what I can tell you is based on the data, of all the students who are considered prepared, only about 20% completed one of the career readiness indicators. And that most common one was the completion of a CTE pathway, while the rest were ticked off more, ticked one of the college readiness requirements. So I would say about 20%. Again, not, not precise because they can qualify in multiple areas, but about 20%.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Proceed.
So I really appreciate seeing the numbers for each of the years when you did more granular look at, you know, all the different temporary housing, socioeconomic disadvantage. And what actually stood out to me was the group of students with IEPs. Because that increase from the baseline of 2018, 2019 was around 900. And then by the time you got to 2022 to 2023, it was 1,200. That's a huge increase. But yet you do see the increase in, of CASP data for both ELA and math. So can you just explain a little bit about what, what it is that, how you're handling that increase in IEP? Maybe a little bit of why we're seeing that? Is it from pandemic or, you know, just give us an understanding of, of what that increase in numbers mean for giving services?
So your question is the increase in the number of students who are qualifying for special education. Like why do, why is there that increase?
First, why, why do we see that increase? And then second, how do we address that? Is it from the formula that we were just hearing about? Are we increasing the staffing to address that identification? You know, all of those. I mean, I don't know anything about, I mean, I know a little bit because I, I experience it, but these are huge numbers.
Yes, and we have seen a, not, I wouldn't say a significant increase, but an increase in the number of students who are qualifying, qualifying for special education services. I know in the past, we've been more around 12% of our student population. And I know that we are ticking up to probably around 14%, which is pretty substantial. A lot of that is due to the pandemic, students not having access, not having language models that they can sort of learn from, being isolated. I know for sure that at least at the younger age, the TKK, our preschool, that many students have speech IEPs because they didn't engage in a lot of conversation in those early years. They weren't out and about, they weren't talking to their cousins or their friends. And so they, many of them, you know, developed a need for speech services. So that's been one of the larger increases. And again, also just the academic delay. I mean, students, some students, if you look at our chronic absenteeism, like some of students just were not at school either. And that doesn't qualify for them, for special education. You have to make sure that you are providing service and that they are attending before they could qualify, but it is a factor. And then the other question that you had was how are we addressing it? Because we are managing to still see an increase in the number of students who are, you know, meeting or exceeding. Small increase, but still an increase. And some of that is through some of the programming, some of the curriculum that you all have approved in terms of the spire, which I mentioned earlier, teaching kids how to read using an Orton-Gillingham, which is a dyslexia-based approach. So making sure that students are getting those foundational reading skills, even if they're in middle school and might be still struggling. So that is something I think that's really factored into that. And then also, I think just our phenomenal teaching team. I mean, I, I think that, that, how much they care, how much time they put into it, that's how you get results.
Thank you.
Okay, Pressy Chankowitz.
Thank you. When you go through, and there are defined metrics for each of those LCAP goals, some of them you mentioned are defined by the state, they're a state requirement. How much leeway do we have in defining what those metrics are? And do we look at similar and, you know, look at comps to see what other districts are using for their metrics as we kind of look for growth opportunities and?
Absolutely. We do have some ability to add more metrics. We are required to have the ones that, all the ones that we have, but some districts will add more specific, more targeted metrics, looking at either a particular student group or looking at a particular thing like the number of referrals that, mental health referrals that come in. And then what the survey or feedback data from students who saw a mental health clinician onsite and how did they, you know, did it, was it effective, was it not? So some is, is far more discreet data.
Because it seems like it could support additional criteria, sometimes could actually support and define the data where it could be interpreted otherwise. And so it just, I was just curious if we had the ability to do that.
We can, we can add as many data points as we want in terms of how we're evaluating our success. We do have that ability. My goal is always to make sure that it's manageable, the LCAP is, yeah, the LCAP is written, is intended for parents to, or community members to be able to understand what we're doing and what we're focused on. And so you try to like, keep it as clear and simple. Because otherwise, I mean, I think it's already 100 pages. So it, it could be even longer. And I've seen some districts, theirs are like 200 and 300 pages.
Okay, thank you.
But we could be more targeted in some of our goals.
Any other comments? Yes. Pressy Gonzalez-Mares.
Yeah, thank you, President Water. The chronic absenteeism, especially in terms of, I think there's a connection between our multilingual learners and the low scores, whether it's ELA or English or math. But it's more than just our multilingual learners. I know we, we got a presentation about particular strategies that have helped change. And I, we had a whole team present on that. And I know this is old data and I'm, and I'm, we're going to hopefully be seeing this continuing to, to go in the right path, to go back, because it's just such a large number. And, and I'm wondering if there's just some, and again, I know I'm jumping here, but just any insight that you've received so far, as to how, you know, it seems like the methods are working and is there more that needs to be allocated there? Because it's just, it's so connected, you don't go to school. It's really hard to keep up with, with your, with the information, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I feel like the efforts that we have in place right now have made a tremendous difference. But there's always more that we can do. And as we look at what sites it's working well and what sites it's not, we can make some adjustments or changes as. some adjustments or changes as a result, so something we can look at.
It's still a big difference from the baseline, right? So huge.
Yes.
And so how do we get there as soon as possible?
And especially for some of our student groups that had pretty substantial chronic absenteeism, where, you know, really high numbers of students were not in school. So it just goes back to really reinforcing good attendance habits from early on. And there's some measures that were put in place to really help parent, help and support parents in doing that.
Which then I was like, oh, her parents, you know, well informed, but the survey's showing that they're feeling connected and informed and knowing what's expected. So makes me think there's other things beyond our, our control of the world. And I always bring that up, there's other factors that doesn't get brought in here. But that makes it really hard for, for a kiddo to show up to school because parents might be facing just really, really big challenges, so.
I feel very fortunate in Napa Valley because we do have such, so much community support, whether it's through our Family Resource Centers, through our parent liaisons, through the social workers that, that we employ. There is quite a bit of support for families and we've increased the number of bilingual social workers. And that's, makes a huge difference in being able to communicate and connect people with the resources that are available in the community. So that they're struggling, because often it's, especially for elementary, it's the parents are the ones, there must be something going on that's preventing the child from coming to school. So we do what we can to support them.
And congrats on the, just continuing to increase on language is not a barrier to participation in school. I think that's such a fantastic trend to keep working towards and increasing that number, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, any other comments? Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comments on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right. Well, thank you, and we can go on a break, a short break, really short, like less than 10 minutes. Okay, five minutes. All right, we're going to return to instructional services to the second half of J3A.
Hello again. So since the California dashboard metrics are so critical to the development of the LCAP, we wanted to take some time to share with you the purpose of the dashboard, its measures, and how those measures are calculated. The California dashboard is based on data from the 2223 school year and was publicly released back in mid-December. The California dashboard has multiple purposes. It provides parents, educators, and community members with meaningful information on school and district progress on a variety of data points, and also meets state and federal accountability requirements. It also allows district leaders to look closely at how certain schools and student groups are performing. The metrics on the California dashboard are all required to be included in the LCAP and drives, drives the development of LCAP goals and spending. Here is a summary of the measures that appear on the California dashboard. There are a number of academic performance indicators, including performance in English Language Arts and Math, English learner progress and college and career readiness. There are two academic engagement indicators, chronic absenteeism and graduation rate. And there's one indicator for conditions and climate, and that is the suspension rate. I'll start with explaining the indicators that are a little more straightforward and then move into the ones that require a little more explanation. Chronic absenteeism looks at the percentage of students who have missed 10% or more of the school year. The graduation rate looks at the percentage of students graduating with a regular high school diploma. Suspension rate looks at the percentage of students who were suspended at least one time in the school year. The English learner progress indicator looks at the percentage of students who increased at least one English learner performance indicator level from one school year to the next. As I mentioned earlier, LCAP scores are divided into six progress indicator levels and students have to show an increase of at least one level. This indicator also looks at the percentage of students who maintained an LCAP performance level of four, which is the highest possible performance level. For English Language Arts and Math, this indicator, the indicator looks at the average student's distance from standard, which is the number of scaled score points on the CASP the average student is short to be considered at standard met, at the standard met performance level. So for example, this shows the scaled score points needed for each performance level by grade for the ELA CASP. The second to last column on the right indicates the scaled score range for standard met. And you can see, for example, that a sixth grader needs a scaled score of 2531 to score in this achievement level. So if a sixth grader scores at 2,500, for example, they are 31 scaled score points short and have a distance from standard of negative 31. The indicator on the dashboard looks at the average distance from standard for all students who took the CASP. The college and career readiness indicator measures the percentage of high school students considered prepared for college and career based on a number of options, including performance on the CASP, passing AP exams, dual enrollment, completion of A through G requirements, completion of CTE courses, et cetera. Oh, I forgot to click, thank you. Okay, so for the college and career readiness indicator, students can qualify as prepared as long as they meet one of these criteria. And these are the measures of college readiness. So one is scoring at standard met or exceeded on both the ELA and the math CASP assessment, taking two AP exams and scoring a three or higher on both exams, completing two semesters of college coursework with a grade of C minus or better, and earning the state seal of violatorcy and a score of standard met or higher on the English CASP test. They can also complete all of the A through G requirements and meet one of the bulleted requirements, which include earning a score of standard met or higher in either ELA or math and a performance level of standard nearly met in the other, completing one semester of college credit courses with a grade of C minus or better, earning a score of three on one AP exam, or completing a CTE pathway. While students can be considered college and career ready from either college or career readiness requirements, the majority of our students qualify through one of these college readiness indicators. And these are the career readiness indicators. Students can earn, can complete a CTE pathway with a grade of C minus or better in the Capstone course and meet one of the criteria listed here, which include earning a score of standard met or higher in one CASP subject and a score of standard nearly met in the other, completing one semester of college credit courses outside of the completed CTE pathway with a grade of C minus or better. And then students can also complete two years of a leadership, leadership or military science and receive a score of standard met or higher on the CASP in ELA or math and a score of standard met on the other. Additionally, students can complete one or more of the following programs and complete one semester of a CTE course with a C minus or better, a Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act, Job Corps, Youth Build, California Conservation Corps, and regional occupation, occupational centers and programs. And for our students with IEPs who receive a certificate of completion as opposed to a standard high school diploma, students can complete at least 100, 100 hours of work experience and the equivalent of four semester courses of college and career exploration or preparation designed to prepare a student with an IEP for employment and independent For each indicator on the dashboard, the state determines a district or school's performance based on two factors, the current year's data and the difference between the current year and the prior, prior year's data as determined by a five-by-five grid, which I will show you an example of momentarily. So your current data and the improvement or decline from the previous year determines your performance. And the nice thing about the system is that it recognizes districts for making progress on indicators even when there's still room for improvement. The criteria on each of the five-by-five grids vary based on the indicator and the performance colors range from red to blue. And since we did not have two years of consecutive data last year, this most recent dashboard is the first time since before the pandemic that we've returned to the color coding of Here's a sample of a five-by-five grid for the suspension indicator. So for example, if a district's suspension rate is high between 4.6 and 8%, but there has been a decline between 0.3 and 1.9 percentage points, the indicator color will be yellow. This recognizes the improvement even though the suspension rate itself is still high. And I know a memo was shared with the board after the dashboard was released with more detailed information, but here you can see how we're performing as a district in each of the indicators. We are in the orange for English and math and in the yellow for English learner progress. The college and career indicator is the only indicator without a color code. Since this is actually the first year since COVID that we've had this indicator, the dashboard indicates a medium status and next year will include a color performance level. And our chronic absenteeism indicator is in the orange and both graduation and suspension rates are in the yellow. And the memo that was shared in December breaks it down by school and provides a little bit more detailed information. And with that, I will open it up for questions and comments.
Well, trustee Hart.
Hi. Hi, Dr. Booth. So thank you very much for, for going through this. I know it's, it's complicated. We, we reviewed this in our committee and there were certainly a lot of questions that came through. I think I speak for everyone when I say it's awfully frustrating to see us in the orange and yellow in a lot of these categories. And I think that we all know that that's a shared concern across the board. I would love to see and understand how can we push that in the other direction? Because some of these requirements don't seem that hard, like the, you know, the, the college readiness, it's like, get one of these like five things and you're good to go. But it's, it's not really, the bar doesn't seem that high and yet we're falling far short. So that's a major concern from my point of view.
I can speak to that a little bit, like something like college and career readiness or the college career indicator. It does seem simple, although it's complex, right, in terms of how students qualify. One of the, the ways that students qualify the easiest is to increase the academic performance on the CASP. And so that's something that we, that's something that we have to focus on, is making sure that students are doing their absolute best and that we're preparing them to do their best on the CASP. And it does take two measures, first, two parts of that for students to be considered college or career ready. Not just like either, it's always like, as, as Dr. Booth just went over, like it takes two pieces, it's not just one thing that will qualify a student for college and career.
It's, it's interesting though to me that we maintain a graduation rate over 90%, which is great, but yet we score so low on these standardized testings. So to me, that, that shows a disconnect and I think a frustration from the general public when you see data like this without having the benefit of having all the information and all the brains in this room to feed you that information as, as a trustee, it's, it's hard to understand and it's hard to explain. Like how, how do you make sense of that? Where you're, you're saying our children are not performing in one hand on these standardized testing and in these different categories, but yet we're still graduating?
Yes, I mean, I'm trying to find the, like, the question is, how are students graduating at a high rate yet still not performing well on the CASP? Yes. And I think when you, when you separate out our, like, if you look at our, some of our 11th grade data, you'll see that we do have, especially around English Language Arts, students who are scoring, you know, significantly higher. The other thing is, is that, you know, sometimes the, we're not doing enough to prepare our students for the CASP exam. It's taken in the 11th grade, there are a lot of other competing things that are happening in the 11th grade. So that's one of the ways that students qualify for college and career, you know, for the college and career indicator. So that may be part of the factor is that we're not doing enough to prepare them to do well on those exams. Some districts have, you know, like really honed in on that. Either they're in some kind of like program improvement or something else where they really honed in on making sure that there's the, the, the test data to support the, the work. What I will hold on to is that the, we're seeing the progress, the CASP data again is from, from last year. We've had a lot of transition and, and in our district, either through the middle school redesign process and different factors. And so, you know, we are poised and primed to see results on the CASP and see far more students score met or exceeded.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. And I do see this, the improvement in the STAR and I do understand the timing on that is, is kind of delayed. So I'm, I'm hopeful to see that data come back to us the next time with improvement and so we can start to see kind of that silver lining and see ourselves pulling back up to even where we were pre-COVID. Because I think as, as much as we don't want to put all of our eggs in that basket of, of standardized testing, that is still the standard that the state holds us to in terms of educating our students. So I want to make sure that we're giving it all of its due attention.
And it is definitely the standard that the state holds us to. And there are other metrics that we look at as well to see how we're doing, whether it's how our students are doing in terms of the support they're getting, in terms of mental health, in terms of all the extracurricular activities that we have and all the different ways that students are able to show their excellence, whether it's in visual and performing arts, those kinds of things. So those are all the things that we're doing to make sure that students have that well-rounded education and this, the, the test that's taken once a year, you know, we do need to put more weight on that. At the same time, understand that it's a test that's taken once a year. But it is the measure that the state looks at, so we need to make sure that we all, we pay attention to that.
Agreed, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we have the shared interest of seeing.
Oh, I know.
It's not a, like, we have a shared interest around that.
I, I have a question that's sort of a follow-up to what, some of what trustee Hart was just saying, and sort of a follow-up to what I asked earlier. And now I'm wondering if we were to give up on the mandating of A through G, if that would give students more flexibility to qualify under the career piece of the career readiness because they would be able to complete maybe with a little more flexibility some of a full complete CTE pathway?
I mean, there are many options that we could explore. That's something that, you know, has come up, I think, in this, this boardroom before around what our A to G requirements are. I know that it was quite a big transition and shift when that happened in the district and there were many valid and very good reasons to make that shift. I just don't know if our system ever really adjusted to that shift of requiring all students to meet A to G requirements, and that's something that we continue to look at. It's really complex and I, I will ask if, if, Dr. Ready, not yet, almost Dr. Ready, if she wants to speak a little bit to the complexity of like, what would that mean if we were to do something like that? Why we, you know, wouldn't consider that, especially as we think about really leaning into career readiness as something we as a district want to focus on, especially in the creation of either new or improved or aligned CTE pathways? So it's, it's a complex issue and we want to make sure that we are doing something that five years from now, we're not sitting here thinking like, why did we do that or why did we do that?
I would also add, and Dr., we're just manifesting ladies here tonight, sorry about that. Director Ready, I'm not sorry, but that's, it's all a good thing. Before Director Ready responds, I just would add that as a reminder, you just were immersed in that career readiness evaluation study. So before we jump to A to G being the barrier, I'd like for us to be given the opportunity to take ownership of our career readiness programs. One of the barriers to not having pathway completion is that we've had very fragmented career pathways in the district because we haven't really, it hasn't been a focus for us as an organization. So I would hope that before we go to that solution, we, you know, the solution you're, you know, you're asking us to think about or that you're alluding to, trustee Gracia, that we first get our career pathways in place, our course sequences around career pathways in place as we implement the work of that evaluation and report.
Yes, let's, let's take on another great big chore.
I think as we move into this area where we are taking these CTE pathways back, it's at least worth considering whether that's an issue or not. You know, I, I think we're making some pretty big changes and so to at least consider whether that's one that we should be thinking about. You know, I'm not suggesting that it absolutely is the problem or that it needs to be changed, but I'd like to know more about it. So I, as we make these large changes, I think it's worth thinking about.
Thank you. Just historically, when we moved to the A to G requirements, we saw an increase in the number of students who were actually able and qualifying to go to college. I happened to be an avid coordinator and teacher at that time. And one of the things that we noticed in the study that was done on the district by WestEd was that students were actually able and qualified to take more rigorous courses, but were not taking those. And I know we experienced some of that in the system, taking, actually going backwards in some of their math classes or continuing to take a similar math sequence when they were perfectly qualified to do that. And so as we really look to align college and career readiness, but also over the past couple of years, aligning across our school sites and ensuring that there is equitable access for all students across any high school that they attend. access for all students across any high school that they attend, that the, the UCA to G requirements are incredibly rigorous and provide challenge and they also provide alignment across our system so that we keep those opportunities and those doors open for students as long as possible. We do make adjustments. So students may be in courses that, in their third and fourth year of math per se that maybe don't position them for UC, CSU, but they still have that qualification to graduate from high school. I think when you think about the discrepancy between some of the UCA to G requirements and then you look at the graduation rate, that also speaks to the alignment. Because in walking into this, you've adopted many curriculum resources. We've talked to you about aligning priority standards and proficiency scales. That foundational work that needed to happen in secondary really ensures that grade level standards are being taught so that you don't see that disconnect between, potentially between the grade and the graduation rate. And so it's early in that process, but now that we're starting to have more alignment, we're starting to see especially in math, that, that trying to keep that rigor of that grade level standard that's coming through in that curriculum resource that was adopted is really challenging to meet. But we're hopeful that we'll start to see more of an alignment between our grading practices and our grading and those, and the graduation rates. But I think that one of the things that is also important to note is as we look at supporting career and college readiness, that the state is moving towards an alignment. And so in, in grants that were just released in the past week, we actually, they're incorporating the A to G requirements alongside CTE, alongside some of that career readiness. So I think as we look to be competitive for the financial opportunities to support some of these programs, that we need to be mindful of looking at both of those indicators and seeing how this progresses.
And I guess one of the things that I'm concerned a little bit about is that it seems like we've had an overemphasis on the college readiness piece and an underemphasis on the career readiness. And I know that we're beginning to address that and I'm encouraged by that, but I am mindful that this might be a way that perhaps is not helping our new focus on the career side of things.
Definitely. I think that our students' feedback around real world hands-on learning that happens in the CTE courses, those courses require high levels of math. Those courses require students to be able to read and write and collaborate in ways that maybe is not happening in their general education courses. And so I think by looking at those together, there, there are opportunities for us to learn from what's happening in our CTE courses that hopefully will impact students' ability to meet those A to G requirements by changing some of those learning environments and experiences that they're having, so that they see how math is more relevant, so that they see that learning how to read and write and have a discussion or a high-quality interaction actually impacts their ability to meet their career readiness or to, even to get a job while they're in high school. Agree.
Any other comments? Thank you, Director Ready. That was terrific. Okay, so do we need public comment on this? Mr. Michael, do we have a public comment on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, no public comment on this item. So now we're going to move to K action items. We've got a few items that were added after the first agenda went out. This is K1, business services. We need, we're going to need a roll call vote for these resolutions. Resolution 2408, declaring an emergency that requires the procurement and construction services for emergency abatement, repair, or replacement at Silverado Middle School without competitive bidding.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion by trustee Gracia and second by trustee Hart. Any public comments on this, Mr. Michaels?
There is no public comment on this item.
No public comment, okay. So we need a roll call vote with student trustee. Oh, sorry. Executive Assistant Morales will do the roll call vote.
Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Shu?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. K1B, resolution 24-09, declaring an emergency that requires the procurement and construction services for emergency abatement, repair, or replacement at Vichy Elementary School without competitive bidding.
So moved.
Okay. Okay, moved by trustee Gracia, seconded by trustee Hart. Any public comments, Mr. Michaels?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, roll call vote.
Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Shu?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. And K1C, resolution number 24-10, declaring an emergency that requires the procurement and construction services for emergency abatement, repair, or replacement of fallen trees without competitive bidding.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, is there any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Roll call vote.
Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Shu?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. K1B, Crystal Communication Radio Insulation.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, I've got motion by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, are there any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great.
K1E, agreement with Bright Event Rentals.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, is there any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, K1F, agreement with Jones Hall.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Gracia, second by Hart, excuse me, trustees. And Mr. Michaels, is there any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? It's unanimous. K1G, surplus equipment and vehicles.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Hart. Mr. McGrath, is there any public comment? Oh, excuse me. Mr. Michaels, is there any public comment?
No, there isn't.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Wait, I should ask student trustee McGrath. It's getting a little late. Student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Zero, unanimous. Thank you. And KH, surplus technology equipment.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, is there any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
No public comment? Student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
Board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Zero, unanimous. Thank you. Okay, now we're on to human resources. Okay, 2A, affiliation agreement with University of the Pacific.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, move by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, is there a public comment on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. 2B, Walden University, letter of agreement for licensure programs.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, is there a public comment on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, great. Student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Zero. Thank you. Unanimous. 2C, request to hire educator less than fully credentialed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, first by Gracia, second by Hart. Mr. Michaels, is there, is there public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, and student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And opposed? None. Okay. 3, instructional services. 3A, supplementary instructional material adoption for high school.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michael, is there any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unanimous. 3B, agreement with Curriculum Associates LLC.
Move to approve.
Motion by Gracia, second?
Second.
Second by Hart. Mr. Michael, is there any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, 4, operation, operational services. Purchase of combi oven.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by, by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michael, do we have any public comment on this oven?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay. Student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
5, schools planning and construction. A, SPC 18.4-24B, contract for design-build services for the Donaldson Way Elementary School Campus Upgrades Project with Arntz Builders.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, move by trustee Gracia, seconded by trustee Hart. Mr. Michael, is there a comment on this? Public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Zero. Unanimous. 5B, SPC 18.91-20, contract with TLCD Architectural Services.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michael, is there any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item. There is no public comment.
Thank you. Student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. C, 5, let's see, 5C, SPC 18.92-20, hazardous materials testing services.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michael, is, are there any public comments on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Thank you. Okay, 5D, SPC 18.93-20, contract for lease, leaseback services with Landmark Constructors.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, are there any public comments on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee Hart? I'm McGrath, sorry.
Aye.
Aye, okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you. Another unanimous vote. We are so harmonious tonight. Okay, 5E, SPC 21.52-17, contract with M&amp;M Project Inspection.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michael, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Great. Student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Hey, thank you. And now we're moving on to informational, general services. Let's see, we've got the Curriculum and Student Support Committee minutes attached and Facilities and Technology Committee. Did you meet?
Did you want to see if there was any public comment?
Oh, right. I should ask about that. Oh, general services, Curriculum and Student Support Committee minutes are attached. Mr. Michaels, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for that work. Okay, Facilities and Technology Committee?
They didn't meet.
Did not meet. Is there public comment on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, C, Finance Committee, we did not meet. Is there any public comment on the Finance Committee?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, Policy Committee, lots of hard work. The notes are to come. Is there any, is there any comment, public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. L2A, Quarterly Investment Report. Is there any public comment on this?
We do not have a public comment on this item.
Okay.